Okay, at six minutes after nine, we'll convene the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors to order and I'd like to invite Carla to do the roll call.
Supervisor Brown?
Here.
Supervisor McCowen?
Here.
Supervisor Woodhouse?
Here.
Supervisor Hamburg is absent by pre-arrangement. And Chair Jordy?
Here. And I'd like to invite Buck Gannert to lead some pledge.
Thank you, Chair. Ready, PJ? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the very flag on which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carrie. Okay. Just want to announce that Consent Calendar Item 8A will be consi-- or just a dead item, 8A will be considered with Consent Calendar. And then we'll go directly into Agenda Modifications. Do we have approval of a letter of support for the Pinoli-Ville Pomos Nation Youth Bill Grant Application through the Department of Labor?
We do.
So that's just on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
And then Agenda Item 2A, which is Adoption of Proclamation Recognizing and Honoring Chief Probation Officer Buck Ganner Upon His Retirement, July 30th, 2016. Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Proclamation of the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors Recognizing and Honoring Chief Probation Officer A.R. Buck Ganner Upon His Retirement, July 30th, 2016. Whereas Chief Probation Officer A.R. Buck Ganner began his career with the Mendocino County Probation Department in August 1993 as an extra help juvenile hall-- juvenile counselor, becoming a permanent full-time employee in December 1994 as the juvenile counselor one. And whereas Chief Ganner rose through the ranks, including time as Deputy Probation Officer One and Two, supervising Deputy Probation Officer, probation division manager, juvenile hall superintendent, and on May 26, 2013, was appointed as Chief Probation Officer. And in case you're wondering, that was the decision of the Superior Court Judges, not this board. So, whereas Chief Ganner has rendered distinguished service to the county and its citizens for over 23 years, demonstrating the highest standards of integrity and professionalism, applying his expertise and sound judgment to his various assignments, and establishing harmonious relationships between the probation department and other departments, agencies, and community organizations. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Mendocino hereby recognizes and honors Chief Probation Officer A.R. Buck Ganner for his service and leadership in public safety to the citizens of the County of Mendocino, and further that this board offers its congratulations and best wishes for continued success to Chief Ganner on this occasion of his retirement, June 21st, 2016. Dan Jordy, Chair. And I would invite Supervisor Brown to present this proclamation with me.[220.43][222.42](APPLAUSE).
Congratulations. Thanks, Seth.
There you are.
Thank you.
Give me two seconds.
Please.
So, I'm just really grateful to the County of Mendocino to give me a second career, starting back in '93. I very much appreciate it, and I'm really ready to move on. Our treasured radio station, The Coast, this morning played a Ray Davies song, "Is There Life After Breakfast"?[273.83][273.83](LAUGHING) And I thought, how poignant.[275.83][275.83](LAUGHING) I will be back at public expression in three months and tell you if there is or isn't.[281.87][281.87](LAUGHING) Thanks again.[282.87][282.87](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.
Okay, we also have a proclamation recognized in the graduates of the Leadership Mendocino Class of '23.
Thank you, Supervisor Jordy. And we're not going to read the proclamation, although we will present it. We are going to have a short presentation of Leadership Mendocino. The county has given a donation to see that this class goes forward each year. It's a wonderful class for all the students, all the leadership members. So, go forward, Ms. Dickerson.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for the proclamation. I'd like to introduce Rebecca Chenoweth, who is with the County Council's Office and is also a Leadership Class '23 grad. And I just thought, since you invest in our program, you should see kind of how we spend the time and what it looks like. So, this is really going to be fast, I'm going to talk fast, I know you guys wanted to go onto really important things. Okay, so Leadership Mendocino is a program of North Coast Opportunities. It's our 24th year, whoops. More than 100 businesses and organizations and agencies have sent their employees through the program. This is a class of the complete, all 30 members of Class '23 at our orientation at Ridgewood Ranch. Whoops, going backwards. And our retreat in September was at the Rivers Bend Retreat. Sheriff Almond starts the retreat off by doing the name game, and if you ever have a group that you need to learn each other's names, this is absolutely phenomenal. In an hour, all 30 people know each other's names for the rest of the year. We also do things like team-building activities, and everybody gets a Leadership Practices Assessment, which is a 360 assessment of what kind of leader they appear to themselves and to others. We started our class days in October with Natural Resources Day. This is a forestry panel at the Willala Arts Center. We went on to a Mendocino Redwood Company's stream restoration site to find out what they're doing for steam restoration and what their timber practices are like. Ended the day at Point Arena on the New Coastal National Monument with a blessing by Lorraine Lewa of the Pinoli-- excuse me, the Point Arena Manchester Band of Pomos. And then Agriculture Day. This is a round robin with families, family farmers who have been in the county for three to five generations, and they are talking about, you know, how farming practices change over the years. And if you can look in the background, you'll see a train. That's a 1/6 model, high-speed train. This is on Max Schlinger's ranch, and it's absolutely a phenomenal thing that he-- so that was a double shot of excitement there. We also did some practical experience. We pruned at Montero, went to visit the olivino, learned about olive oil and how you make it, and then also met with a bunch of other people involved in ag in the country, in the county, in the country. Business and Finance Class Day, we started at Mendocino College with four businesses, actually got to have a SWOT analysis done to see if they should expand or not. And it's kind of like a free focus group for them and a really great experience for the class members. We moved on to Yo'Kao Ranch, where we had a panel discussion on what the legalization of cannabis is going to do to the economy in Mendocino County, and Carmel Angelo was one of the speakers on that. And we ended the day at Peter Piker Manufacturing. Government Day, the morning was spent meeting a bunch of elected officials and other county people that have-- that work for various safety organizations and so forth. The afternoon was dedicated to an issue that, this is on Coyote Dam, with Mike Dillaba from the Army Corps. They, we had a mock supervisor meeting, and all five of those supervisors are from the class. They each actually live in the district that they represented in this council meeting. And we debated whether or not to pass a countywide bond to pay for raising Coyote Valley Dam. And I'll just have to tell you that it was a quite-- they came really prepared. We had four groups, two groups in favor and two opposed that made their arguments. And in the end, the council voted three to two in favor of it, but it was quite a debate. On Health and Wellness Day, we went to Willetts. Started out in the morning, finding, at the senior center, learning about all kinds of resources. And then we went to Howard, the new Howard Hospital, and met with CEOs and directors of the hospitals and clinics in the county. Education Class Day was at, in Fort Bragg, meeting with county officials in the Mendocino County Office of Education, and visited their garden, which supplies a lot of produce to their school lunches, which we actually had the school lunch there. Met, the highlight of the day was meeting with these students, these amazing students just answered questions so fabulously knowledgeable, and got to make complaints and possible solutions. So, then they took us over to the high school, and we all spread out into different classrooms and got to have a classroom experience. We spent an entire day in Covelo. This is Ernie Maryfield, who is an elder, a tribal elder, and he talked to us about the history of Round Valley, the plaque for the, that's sitting over there on the right. He explained how that came to be, and kind of gruesome, awful history of Round Valley. We went to lunch at Life Power Farm, and then we visited with businesspeople and tribal members around all of these times. Our last class day is Arts and Tourism. Started at the Mendocino Art Center, where we actually auditioned for a play, learned about all the arts happenings in the county, and then went across the street to Rosemary Allen's Studio to see a working artist. We went from there to the Ford House, where we had a tourism panel that talked about how to bring millennials to Mendocino County. And we had a lot of millennials in the class, so it was a lively discussion. All our class days are long and full, as anybody will tell you that has gone through the program. And the next best thing, besides them being exhausted, is that the networking is truly extraordinary. The people that are in the classes and the people that they meet along the way, they have resources all around the county for the rest of their time here. They all have to do a project or serve on a board, and these are some of the boards that they have served on and the projects that they're doing. I just want to point out the nine-member class project, working on possibly starting a Mendocino Youth Leadership Corps, and you will hear more about that as we get farther along. We had graduation at the Solar Living Institute. And then we had a fundraiser to help finance our program, and this was at a ranch south of Hoplin. It's a, it's our second year to have a treasure hunt and champagne brunch. I have to do a shout-out to Factory Pipe for these amazing-- these were treasures left by Black Bart. So, Ross Liberty crafted these amazing Black Bart silhouettes for decor. This was the ranch where it was. This is the auction, highlights of very excited people at the auction. We also, so far, we've had 595 graduates from Leadership Mendocino, and we now have a two-year-old alumni association. We have mixers four times a year, where everybody can continue the networking with other grads, and these are the places where we've had them. Including, I don't know if Buck's still here, but we did one on juvenile justice at the Grace Hudson Museum, which he participated in. So, thank you to our circle of leaders. These are our ongoing supporters, like the County of Mendocino. We couldn't do this without you. These are some of our other supporters, and that's it. Thank you very much. This is an amazing program, and Rebecca, you want to say something? Rebecca's a graduate from this year, so...
I'd been in this county about six months, and both Carmel Angelo and Judge Janine Nadel suggested I enter this program to learn more about what Mendocino County has to offer. And I got to meet a lot of really amazing, dedicated, talented people. But I can say, it's like asking for a sip of water and getting it out of a fire hose.[810.32][810.32](LAUGHING) It's a lot of information, but it was all good. And I can't recommend it more highly than everybody should do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, County of Mendocino. Thank you, Supervisors, for all your support.
Thank you.[823.64][824.42](APPLAUSE). Okay. We have a couple speaker cards on comments on non-agenda items, and so I'll go straight to that. We have Sheriff Tom Almond.
Good morning, Chair. Morning, Members. Board. I would imagine that you may be curious where the mental health petition is, the status of. And I, I'm here to tell you that a very small group of very active citizens have energized a very large group of our county citizens, and in a very short time, we'll, at the end of this week, we'll turn in over 4,000 signatures, requiring 2,502. And so, we believe that either bad signatures will be minimal and will certainly qualify for the November ballot. But Supervisors, my purpose of being here is very clear. In our gathering signatures, the citizens are very clear that they are hoping to see improvement for our mental health services. And I know that two of our Supervisors have signed this petition. I'm not aware of the other three doing it. I could be mistaken. I've read every one. We have one missing today. But I would encourage the Supervisors to consider signing the petition, not to say that you support the mental health services, because I, I'm aware of each Supervisor's position on why they may have problems with this. But remember, this ballot initiative, the signature merely says you want to put it on the ballot for the purpose of letting the citizens decide if a mental health service center will be funded for our county. And the group of citizens which support this represent Mendocino County as a, as a whole, of the Democrats, of the Republicans, of the Independents, of every group of citizens, possible elected officials, business owners, mental health clients, mental health families. It's, personally, I've gathered well over 1,200 signatures, and I've had six people say no, for miscellaneous reasons. Usually, they don't sign petitions. But I would encourage the Supervisors who haven't signed this to give this consideration, because we are on the point of improving some, the mental health services for all of Mendocino County. We're to the point of realizing that jail is not the place where a lot of mentally ill people go. And I would encourage you to think about it. I look forward to having a spirited debate this fall. I would encourage you to ask any questions you want. But Mendocino County needs this. Mendocino County will have this, and the citizens are certainly in support of it. So, I would ask that you give us some consideration. Thank you very much.
Okay, we also have a card from Mary Jane Montana, interim shelter manager.
Good morning, Chair and Board. We've been busy the last six weeks. We've done remodels and different things inside, and in order to do that, we kind of have to tear things apart, set them in the hallway, put the new stuff in, and then put the stuff back. And that's where we're at now, is putting everything back. The details of the improvement plan that I went over on May 3rd are in the CEO's report, and I will be back this afternoon to answer any specific questions that you may have on that. A lot of that stuff is not necessarily noticeable to the public, some of the document rewrites and things like that. So, there may be the appearance to the public that some of it hasn't been done when indeed it has. Our biggest issue right now, of course, is kitten season. People, we kind of want to run and hide every time we see somebody bringing a box to the, to the door, because we know it's full of kittens. We have kittens everywhere, in every room, in every imaginable space. That being said, we've had great fosters step up to take these kittens home until they're old enough to be adopted. We are now placing kittens in the front lobby. We've discussed this with our veterinarians and other colleagues, so that we can take advanced adoption applications on them to move them through faster, and it seems to be working pretty well. We're running specials, for lack of a better word, on kittens, cats, older dogs, dogs that have been in the kennel for quite a while. I know this reduces the revenue, but it gets the animals out as well. We're taking animals out to, along with the help of volunteers, out to different adoption events. Mendo Access TV is featuring animals on their in-between time, and hopefully today, in between the board meeting, they'll show some animals as well. We have animals in Ukiah Daily Journal. Anderson Daily Advertiser is thankfully putting animals in all the time. And at Noyo Theater, we have featured animals as well. We're a little bit short-staffed due to a resignation. Sheriff Almond stole one of my kennel help to be a new animal control officer, and that'll be great for them, too. So, I'm interviewing this week, and hopefully we'll be fully staffed again within a couple of weeks. In the meantime, staff have really stepped up, working extra time, hours, and days, and so have the volunteers. They've been great, and I can't thank staff and volunteers enough for, for helping us get through this little bit of short-staffing that we're dealing with right now. And I'll be here to answer specific questions this afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other public comments on non-agenda items? Count it.
Good morning, everybody. I had sent all the Supervisors an email.
Please give your name.
My name is Monica Fox, and I had sent you all an email. I hope you got it with all the goals that Mary Jane had put together for the first 45 days, which was up on June 15th. I have brought another printout of all the goals that have been established, because I won't be able here this afternoon, in case you have deleted your email or didn't receive it. And I just wanted to briefly say that we're having a bit of a crisis at the shelter, because we don't have enough volunteers to walk dogs. There are many dogs that don't get out every day. Some of them don't get out for days in a row, because there's just not enough people to walk. The staff seems very, very stressed, because they're just running around, putting out fires, and have no time to give any special attention to the animals, simply because there aren't enough people to deal with the shelter. It's completely full, and as you heard Mary Jane saying, kitten season is upon us. And I was at the clinic last week with my shell, with my foster dog, and there were anesthetized cats laying everywhere, waiting to be spayed and neutered. It was really quite something to watch. I'm here today primarily in behalf of my foster dog, Patches, who had an, had to have an eye removed at the shelter, and he wasn't healing well there. So, I stepped up to take him in. He has turned out to be a most wonderful dog, and I have not returned him to the shelter, because I don't want him to grow back into a kennel. Once I had taken him home, he started to limp, and when I called the shelter about that, they said they weren't really sure what was going on, but they could see him in a week or so. So, I didn't want to wait that long. I took him to my own vet, where he was diagnosed with a torn ligament that needs surgery. So, I have, I'm still have Patches in my home, and I'm going to keep him until we have fixed all his health issues. The shelter is unable to pay for the surgery. It's quite, quite expensive. And that has brought up a thought that has really bothered me. What happens to dogs that come to the shelter with a serious health issue, that the shelter doesn't have the funds to pay for? Nobody would, most likely, nobody would adopt a dog that has a $3,000 surgery coming up. And so, he would be at the shelter indefinitely, eventually euthanized? That is really a question that I, I am very concerned about. And just in finishing, because I see the yellow light is on, I have some flyers that one of my fellow volunteers has created for me, and we're doing an active fundraising drive to get the money together to give Patches the surgery he needs and deserves. So, I would like to leave this here, and information on how and where to donate is on the back of the flyer. And thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, we're going to go to consent.
Just very briefly, and thank you, Mr. Chair. The CEO report is online, and it does contain a schedule of the short, medium, and long-term tasks for the shelter. So, that's available online, or you could probably get a copy next door at the executive office. So, that's just for information.
So, that, that's an attachment to the back of the Monday report?
Yeah. Yeah. In fact, if you'd like a copy right now, Monica?
Yeah, I would love it.
Okay, so that is online. So, we're going to go to the consent. We're going to go to the Consent Calendar, and the Board is also going to meet concurrently as the Mendocino County Air Quality District, and in order to, and the Water Agency, for Consent Calendar Items, AB and AC. And I do have two speaker cards for the Consent Calendar. So, Pedro. Oh, we establish proper notice for the Consent Calendar items.
Proper notice has been established.
Okay, I do see a question here, Supervisor McCowen?
Well, actually, I'm prepared to put a motion on the floor if you're ready for that.
Go for public comment, I think. Yeah. So, public comment from Pedro Morales?
Hello. Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Pedro Morales. I'm here representing Connector Productions of the Mendocino Coast. We are an, an events collaborative, which just began in December. We're a team of collective artists, visionaries, community members that want to create really fun, dynamic events and, and productions that happen out on the Mendocino Coast. So far, we've had three events that were nighttime events, and we've had one daytime event on the Mendocino, on the Mendocino Headlands over at Big River Beach. With every event that we've done, we have donated to charity a percentage of our proceeds.
Just a question, are you speaking to one of the Consent Calendar items?
I am, yes. And right now, we, S.A. and I are seeking consent to be, from the Department of Transit-- Yes. To, to be able to put on a Fourth of July event that happens on, in front of Frankie's in Mendocino. We have had a couple of complaints from two years back, where we were asked to come and seek consent here. There were very, very minimal, smoke going to neighbors and such, kind of minimal complaints. And what we are doing is essentially creating a safe space for the people of Mendocino to come and, and enjoy themselves on the Fourth of July. We're creating less car accidents, less, less availability for people to get reckless on the Fourth of July, essentially. And with your approval, we'd love to, we'd love to make that happen for the community. It's a community bonding experience, and we hope to receive consent from you. Thanks a lot for listening.
Okay, thank you. And then, S.A., Ephraim?
Thanks. Good morning, Supervisors. My name is S.A. Ephraim. My wife, Ruth, I run Frankie's Pizza and Ice Cream Parlor in Mendocino. For about eight years, we've had our business for nine, for about eight years, we've conducted successful street events in front of our space, a small area of Ukiah Street. And we're seeking approval for our third year of doing a post-Fourth of July parade event on our block. We've done it two years previously. These are excellent community events. They're all ages. It's a great mix of locals and tourists. And like Pedro was saying before, this is a safe space. As you all know, or probably know, this is the one day in Mendocino that people are allowed to drink in the streets, which they do heartily, and I'm fully in support of that. And there were, there was a number of years where, after the parade, there was an event that was held at Friendship Park, which is right in town. And for whatever reason, I'm not really sure why, that event stopped. And there were a lot of trouble, there was a lot of trouble that happened the couple years that there wasn't an event that followed the parade. And so, a couple years ago, we picked it up, and we said, well, we have this space. We have six years already of, of a successful Halloween Street event. And so, we had two years of giving the folks in Mendocino, which is thousands and thousands of people that come for the Fourth of July. We gave them a safe place to be. We're not serving alcohol in the streets. My business does serve alcohol, and it's contained on our porch. But we also serve food. There's live, there's live and DJ music. We provide tables and chairs. This is at our expense, but this really benefits everybody in Mendocino. So, there was a couple complaints after the first year that came right before last year's event, but we had already received our approval for the encroachment permit. So, what happened, my understanding from the Department of Transportation, was this gets kicked back to the Board of Supervisors for your approval again. So, we're asking for your approval. They said, get some signatures. Make sure you get more signatures than complaints. I collected passively over 500 signatures just in the past three and a half weeks that is in support of this. You guys are welcome to look at this or have this if you want. There's great commentary on what a great event this is. Again, this is all ages. Everybody is welcome. It's a free event. Yes, there were complaints. Yes, we attended to them last year. I don't think there were any other complaints. I invite you all to come as well and see what we do. My business's line is nourishing community, and we do that with everything we do. So please come, share that with Mr. Hamburg as well, that we invite you all to come. I'll leave this with you if y'all want to look at this.
Okay, we have a question.
Sure.
Yeah, a couple of clarifications. I think the closure officially is from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Yes, we've amended the times.
But the event itself, according to one email I received, is scheduled from 1:00 to 6:00.
That's correct. That's how we're advertising it.
Because, as you're aware, there are some nearby business owners that aren't as completely thrilled with the party as the attendees are. So how well you respond to those concerns and address them will ensure the longevity of the event. So ultimately, hopefully, it just becomes totally non-controversial. One thing, and I think possibly the county is at least equally responsible, earlier notice to the neighbors so that they have an opportunity for a meaningful response because some of them received a notice, and I think it was from county DOT a week or so ago. Well, it would be unfair to you to dramatically alter the event at this point, but if there's real issues that need to be addressed, we need earlier notice to the people involved.
Sure.
So just for next year, you know, I don't think you have to respond, but just that's something our department staff could take care of.
Sure. Can I ask a follow-up question and make a follow-up comment to that?
Well, to the chair.
Go ahead and ask.
My question is, for events that go on, how many complaints make it so that the event can happen? I mean, we have thousands and thousands of people that come and give support. You know, in three weeks past, we just got these signatures from this sitting on my counter at my business. But when you have two complaints, it seems like a better approach to have communication about those complaints and address them and figure out solutions instead of just shutting it down. And that's what I'm here to ensure doesn't happen. And we're very proactive about, you know, our communication. And yes, we missed that on that first year or the second year, but I want to ensure that we're having good communication because this benefits a lot more people than might have been harmed.
Okay.
Well, the open continuing communication is what I'm speaking to, and I'm sure that that's in your interest and the rest of the folks. So we're just trying to get this dialed in so the concerns are as minimal as possible. We're not trying to shut something down.
Right. Well, thank you for your time.
And I'll just add, and I don't know if the county's DOT does this or planning and billing does this, but the city of Fort Bragg, when they have events in Fort Bragg, they have a before-event and after-event meeting. And so it's, they call it the Technical Advisory Committee or TAC. Anyway, so if the county doesn't do that, I think it'd be wise for the county to do that so that you and your neighbors can meet with the county staff and discuss what was the plan for the event. I'm just, I'm hoping that happens. If it isn't happening now, hoping it's happening in the future.
Well, I'd love it if the county would be more involved. We don't need to have our name on this.
Thanks, your colleagues, Robert.
If the county wants to be more involved, we invite it.
Yeah, I agree. I think the county needs to be more involved in Mendocino. And the coast in general. Okay. So do we have a motion for the consent counter?
I'll move approval of the consent counter, and I would request that a no vote be recorded for me on item K, the contract with Libert Cassidy Whitmore.
Do we have a second to the?
Second.
Supervisor, what else?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had three things I wanted to comment. I don't know if you want to pull those or?
Go ahead.
Have me go through them. Number one is C, which is the budget. And I wanted to remind the council that I was very, I wasn't happy about the budget process the first year I came because I didn't feel that I was involved in it. And this year has been a very different process. And I wanted to go out of my way to thank our assistant CEO, Alan Flora. We have a whole new process now and input earlier in in the workshops. And now the challenge is kind of on me and the board to understand the details and ask our questions. But it's, it feels very comfortable, and I appreciate your patience with me during that first year. I recall being very angry, and you must have been pretty surprised. But the work you put into this and changing the whole format, I think, takes far more energy. Doing the budget's hard enough, but this extra work going towards transparency is what everyone wants out there. And at meetings, they talk about it and have additional questions. And I'm sure we'll be talking about breaking down things more, but you don't want to break it down so much that it's a huge volume. So it's quite an act that you perform. But I just want to thank you very much for what you've done. I appreciate it very much. That's all I had on C. If I could make a comment on H, Mr. Chair? H was just to comment to Alan and staff that it mentions Cal Works, and that's an area that I'll certainly approve this. But in my district, I hear a number of stories from people involved in the program that it just doesn't work for them. Just the flow of cash to pay people and reimburse them. We're trying to inspire people to work and pay taxes and be part of the system. And we have a lot of administration and employees doing this, but somehow it isn't always perfect. There's room for improvement. And I'd like to focus on that and gather information if you can direct me, I think, before, but talk to Becky. And I'd like to dig into the next layer and see what you're planning and how we're proceeding to make it better. And that was my only comment on that one. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And in? Oh, this was about the master position allocation table for next year. And I wouldn't expect an answer right off, but I was in a meeting, and there was some confusion about one of the positions that I've paid attention to is chief psychiatrist. And it's something we've funded but not been able to fill the position, I believe, for three years. And it says here that it's eighty-four dollars an hour. I'd given the number to the group as being two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand is what we're offering that position, but unable to fill it. And here at the board, I asked that we increase it to four-hundred and didn't get approval for that. But we're not offering enough to fill the position is the main point. But I just wanted to meet with you, and we can do it later, as far as, does that eighty-four dollars, that doesn't add up to the two-ninety-eight? And at the meeting, people had mentioned a figure of one-seventy-five or something. So I think it's the confusion between the benefits and maybe things I don't understand. So it's not a rush for today, but I'd like to get the clarity on that one, and that'll teach me about the other positions. Thank you.
Be happy to follow up with you on that.
Thank you.
I'll just add that I also had questions during our budget about that position because it's been vacant for so long. And yet, the sheriff's office in the jail has money for some sort of psychiatry services and that's, but that's done through telemedicine, so it's not a person on-site either. And it just, it makes me wonder if there's a better way of doing things. So, okay. So we have a motion to approve the consent counter noting Supervisor McCowen dissenting on the?
A no vote.
A no vote dissenting on the LCW contract. We'll vote other than that?
And also, of course, that includes item 8A, I believe it was. The consent, yes, includes item 8A. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, right.
Motion carries with Supervisor McCowen dissenting on item K and Supervisor Hamburg absent.
Okay, all right. Now we're going to go to item 5D, which is discussion and possible action regarding the status of adult mental health services, transition-related activities in the Kemper Consulting Group, Mental Health Services Review, and sponsors Health and Human Services Agency. We're on 5D?
All right, good morning. And we have our four transition grids presented to you today to go through where we are at regarding the transition of the adult mental health services. And so I'm happy to answer any questions you have regarding the four grids that were presented to you.
Well, if you'd like questions?
Yes.
Okay. I do have a question. As I think, you know, because I think I mentioned this to you, when you were interviewing for the job, that in my mind, one of the most important positions that the county has is the position of patient advocate. And in fact, I think I meant, shared with you the fact that when your predecessor had your job, I wasn't even unaware that there was such a position. And that, and it turns out, I've been told that that position wasn't even filled, although it might be state-required for some time. The county may have contracted with some service or a 1-800 number or something like that that may explain why I wasn't aware of this person. And so I'm just trying to understand, what is the plan for that position? I've been told that the current person who, again, the first live body we've had since I've been on the board, is being told her contract's expiring. And so what is the plan? Because in my mind, again, that position's really important because absent a person in that position, members of the public will routinely, consistently contact supervisors and say, give me help, intervene. And that's not our job. Our job isn't to manage county staff, it's to adopt policy. But if there's not someone filling a position, absent that person, people, members of the public are going to continue to contact us, which really is not appropriate, but it's their only recourse.
So just some history. We had that position contracted out for several years. And then I want to think it was about in 2015 that our patient rights advocate at the time decided to retire from being the patient rights advocate at the end of her contract. And then we were filling that position by in-house with two county staff. So they were acting as the PRA in the time that we were looking to, we did an RFP for that, I think twice. And then we went ahead and filled it with another contractor. So we are creating another contract. We've actually done some research to really make sure that our contract for the PRA is really where it needs to be. So we've been looking at the regulations, other counties' PRA contracts, and we do have a candidate that we are going to be going into contract with this fiscal year. And so it'll be somebody else, but we will have a warm body coming in July.
Well, I would just say again that up until this person was hired, I was repeatedly getting phone calls. Since she's been hired, the person we have now, I'm not getting complaints. I'm not getting, I mean, in the same way. And so I hope if you're going to fill the position with someone else, that it's not going to result in more complaints to us because that person is invisible as her predecessor was.
Well, the hope is that that person will not be invisible and that they will be very visible in the community and going to the meetings and out there for the clients. So, and it'll be part of their contract to do that.
Okay. Any other questions?
We're going to get a presentation, or we're just asking questions, and that'll be the?
I don't know. You were asking us for questions, I thought.
Yeah, just from what we've read, that was contained in our packet.
Okay. One thing I'd like to say to you is that going through this change, there have been a number of years of criticism and problems and just a lot of bad feelings. So when we go through the change, it's amazingly quieted down now, and I want to be part of being more positive because I was very concerned about our inability to give the services that I thought we needed. And I'm very hopeful we're going to do much better. And it's a fine line of when do you say, I think questions are more positive than criticism, and gathering information is my goal. How could you explain to us that you're doing as far as all the people you have to hire and the turnover and the time limits? I've asked you a few times if you really think we can do this because it's asking a lot. And you're taking over from something for no one's fault, I'm not blaming anyone, that wasn't working. And then you try to make it work, and that's a huge challenge. And then later on, we're going to get into the budgeting part of this. And we have a very tight, optimistic budget, but almost like opening the drawer to see what's in it. We don't know what's in it yet. So it's a, it's a stretch, and we're going to have a lot of challenges. So my interest is in a long-term working relationship where we honestly identify problems and say, how can we help you with this? And that's what I really want from your presentations to the board is, and maybe I don't speak for the board, but I'd be more interested in, in the future, in very active presentations of, here's where we're at, here's our challenge, and these are two or three ways we can go forward. And let us give some real specific input. Because when the board works together, I think we're very good at it when we understand the level and can direct you. But I really want to be given those choices and not have things covered up or act like it's not perfect because nothing is. So I'm really optimistic to be working with the whole new setup and want to be a partner in that. Can I ask specifically how we're doing as far as hiring all the people? Because everybody's trying to hire people, and that's always been our problem. That one issue is really going to be tough. Can you respond to how we're doing and what your timeline looks like?
Sure. As regards to the county hiring, I know that, and I'll speak, RQMC has been able to hire, I believe, eight or nine crisis staffs. So they've really been able to ramp up to prep for starting July 1st, which is really great. As for the county, we have struggled with getting people hired. We, I think we've brought on two new people since we've started sort of the transition. So we are putting stuff out there. We've done some interviews. We're looking to make job offers. We're hopeful in those job offers. But we definitely are not where we would like to be in regards to staffing up. So it does mean that, as you know, as you know, we're taking on more hats, the staff that are there, to make sure that we get through the transition. But we are doing it. We are hopeful, you know, we are hopeful that maybe by the July 5th, a new orientation, we'll have more staff to bring on. But we are going in a little bit probably more short-staffed than we had hoped to be. But I think we've accomplished a lot of what we had hoped to accomplish in this transition. I think a lot of our staff have worked very hard. I think we are making a lot of those timelines. We are very optimistic that this is going to be a great transition. I have to give a lot of credit to RQMC because they've been a fabulous partner with us in this. And they have been more than willing to, at any time, say, how can we help you as we are with them, is how can we help them? So I think that that's been a huge success on, even though the county is still short-staffed, why we've been able to do what we've done is that partnership, is they're willing to help us when there are things that we need help with. But we are going in shorter staff than I would like to be.
Is the pressure that it puts on the people that do work extra hard, and you can do it, and they have been doing it, I think, in different units. People have been floundering and working hard for a couple of years, so they're already tired. And I know you can recharge yourself again and again, and then finally, there's nothing left to give. And I just wonder if there's any way, and this is a future question, that the board can be more supportive somehow at this special time because we need those people. The experience they have is so tremendous. The ones I've spoken to are experts at their field and can talk about stuff you don't know what the heck they're talking about. So it's hard to replace them. And we just cannot lose these people that we have. That's why I always am positive and supportive of them because we need them badly. So if there's something the board can do, I know it can't all be money, but even outside-the-box things, I would really like to hear requests. Even if we have to say no to you, it'll get us thinking about what we can do to make this work because the next year's going to be crucial. Thank you. That's all I have for right now.
I have another question because I was at the city council meeting in Fort Bragg on two Mondays back, and I read in the paper that they all, the same presentation was given to the Ucaya City Council, maybe this week or last week also. And that had to do with the? And that had to do with the, the county's mental health housing funds, and the county's contractor, Rural Community Housing, gave the presentation. There was a county employee who was there, but wasn't really part of the presentation. And my request is, you know, based on the very mixed reaction that the proposal received, and, and I would say, part of that was because of the way it was presented. It was sort of, the, the council and the public was given a pretty stark picture of what, what could be coming their way. And, and in that, basically, you know, the presentation for Rural Community Housing was thirty to forty housing units for homeless people. And, and the feedback I've received from people who follow this much more closely say, "Well, the mental health housing funds are not necessarily for homeless mental health patients, so why was he saying that?" It's only, as I understand it, from other sources, is that the funding that the county has, 1.3 million, which is only about one-fifth of the total, one-fourth of the funding that would be aggregated to build the apartment complex. But even that funding only requires that the person have severe mental health issues, and that they either be homeless or be in jeopardy of homeless. And their point is, if someone has severe mental health issues, they're probably, by definition, in jeopardy of, at some point, becoming homeless. So the definition, it sounds like, is much broader than the way it was presented to the public. And I get the feeling, from what the news article read in the Daily Journal, that it was presented the very same way at the Ukiah City Council. So I really question the way it's being presented. And, and I really would request that before there is another public meeting, that there is like a check-in with some of us on the board supervisors to really explain what specifically is required of those funds, and not what perhaps the grant writer wants to characterize the program in writing the grant. Because, again, he's going to be seeking, and I applaud him for being aggressive, he's going to be seeking other funds, and maybe he thinks he's going to get a couple extra points on scorecard on his, on his grant application if he says, "A hundred percent of the people will be homeless," you know, moved into this, into this project. But that is not necessarily what the public wants. It's not necessarily what the parents who live in the community, who have adult children with mental health services, want. They, they basically want an apartment for their adult child to be able to move into in a safe environment, but not necessarily living at their house with them. And, and so there's a great interest in having that service, but not necessarily the way that, the way this project is being proposed by RCHDC. And so again, I think there needs to be a check-in with, with us, and to really validate what is really the requirement of these grant applica, on these grant applications, and what, what's the latitude that the county has? Because it could be that we could actually move ahead with the support of the community, because, I mean, basically, we're not going to force this on Fort Bragg, or Willets, or Ukiah. And, and there's no reason for RCHDC to be more narrowly defining this project, I know they're intending to rent to, if, if the grant doesn't require that, if it allows for a broader spectrum of, of residents. So that's my takeaway, and, and I think, you know, the project could be dead on arrival if it doesn't, isn't recalibrated in some way.
Well, I am happy to have our MHSA team come back in July and really define the funding for you guys, so that you have a clear understanding. And I will ask that Mike not meet with any other councils until, city councils, until after we make sure that we have a clear, everyone is in agreement on how we want to present the program. So I will make sure that we come back with that.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Supervisor McCown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think the, the definition of the project has been very much an open or a moving target. And I think part of the direction that it may be going now, and it, it was a little surprising to me to read the, the focus of the project, when we had just had a presentation here a few weeks ago, and it didn't seem clear what the focus would be at that point. It seemed like it was more flexible. And I'm not at all objecting to the current focus. I think it addresses a critical need. But there is something about the process of transparency, and I'm, I'm guessing the current focus may be related to the perception of where funds can best be leveraged. And I know that has been one of the primary goals of RCHDC, so that they can access as much money as possible to build as many units as possible. But I, I think it probably would be appropriate to have another presentation back to the Board of Supervisors. I know that they've done outreach to a couple of city councils, so once they've completed their round of meetings with the city councils, we should get them on the next available agenda, I believe. And, you know...
Well, they've already presented to Fort Bragg and Ukiah, and I would, in defense of Tom Woodhouse and the Willet City Council, I'd request that he not give that same presentation to the Willet City Council. I mean, basically, it's digging a hole and making this project hard to move forward, because it's been so narrowly defined by, by Mike Palisades from Rural Community Housing.
Well, you know, and this is one of the unfortunate things, ultimately, any project of this type requires the political will of the elected decision-makers, who tend to be susceptible to public pressure if five people show up. We heard the speaker today, does it take one complaint, two? People in our positions tend to be very sensitive to public concern, which is appropriate. But we also have to recognize there are critical needs in our communities that are not being met. And the question is, if this isn't the right community, if this isn't the right location, then where? And if the answer is nowhere, we're not doing our jobs.
Well, again, it sounds to me like there's interest in the community of having housing for low-income residents, not necessarily homeless people who, for whatever reason, have chosen to move to Mendocino County.
Well, they may have been born in Mendocino County, or they may have lived here twenty years.
And they may not have. Okay, so those are my comments. Supervisor Woodhouse?
Thank you. I was, been to a few meetings, and some things are making more sense. I'm wondering if you could detail for me, for us, what responsibility the county's taking on, and what the provider's taking on, how those changes are going to affect the county if we can't hire people? It's my understanding that the county is taking on like the access line and the residential out-of-county responsibility, and I think it's the managed patient care. And then RQM was going to do outpatient crisis, and I, I wrote down here, MHSA contracts and contractors, or subcontractors. Can you explain that to me, what new things the county's taken on and how we can do it? Like, the crisis line is of deep interest to me. Everybody always wanted to know, "How can we get help?", and that'll be our challenge in the future, too.
So yeah, so what the county is taking on is the oversight of the 25 and above LPS conservatorship placements. So we will be overseeing all of the 25 and above, RQMC will maintain the 24 and under that are LPS conserve. So we will take over that placement decision and working with the Public Guardians Office on that. We will also be taking over the access line, that is correct. But the access line is not the crisis line. So one of the things when, before we contracted out, the county had very clear, an access line that's required by the state to have a 24/7 access line that a client can call at any time, and ask questions about how to access services, how to file a complaint, how to do an appeal, a state fair hearing, what their rights are. Really, that's what the access line is, to be able to do, is to call in and say, "I would like to know how to access services in your community." The crisis line was separate when the county had it. We had a specific crisis line, that that's where you called for all your urgent crisis needs. When we contracted out, those two lines got merged. And so your access line and your crisis line became one. What we're doing as we are making the changes with this transition, we are going to an access line and a crisis line, so that you don't have people that are calling for access interrupting a crisis call. So we really want the crisis line to be focused on those crisis calls, that everybody knows what that crisis line is, and the access line to really focus on what they're supposed to focus on regarding access and your rights. So we'll be separating those out. RQMC will be overseeing the 24/7 crisis line, and the county will be overseeing the 24/7 access line. So we are aware that there's probably going to be some confusion as we've combined these lines, and now we're separating them out. The good news is, is that the crisis line we're using is the crisis line that RQMC has been using since they started services with RC3. So we're using an established crisis line that, for the youth system of care, everybody already knows, we're just now adding it to the adult system of care. We are going to be doing a lot of, like, public service, you know, announcements, so that people really understand the difference between the access line and the crisis line. We'll be doing some cards, we're handing out a card that has a front and back, on one, it'll talk about the crisis line, on the other, it'll talk about the access line. We're doing a special newsletter, right at the beginning of July, sometimes the beginning of July, that's going to talk about the whole mental health transition. So we're going to do a newsletter that really gets out to the community that talks about, "Here's all the providers, here's how you access them, these are the services they provide." It's going to really detail out the transition, so really, hopefully, enough that people really understand and really clearly say, "This is the access line and the, the crisis line," and really details out what the county's doing versus what RQMC is doing. So the other thing the county is doing is medication management for the 25 and above. And that's the three items that really the county is taking back in. RQMC will be providing the outpatient services, which include both specialty mental health and MHSA contracted providers, and then crisis services, overseeing inpatient hospitalizations, and that's kind of the adult piece that they'll be taking on.
Thank you, that's very clear, and I've read it before, but it takes a few times to get it. The medication management aspect of it, I think it's less than a million dollars, or eight hundred thousand, or I forget the number. But it's not a huge profit maker, so I'm looking at all these assignments, and the costs, and getting matched dollars drawn down, and wondering, then applying that to the budget of what we're promising, and seeing how tight it is, that when we have, and we're going to have mistakes, right, or problems, or needs for other money, is there, this is more of a financial question, so I'll do that later in the budget. But we, have we been able to hire people for the crisis line? Access line is ours, the access line. How many people would that take to do? And I've read some in here about it.
So what we're doing with the access line is kind of different. So we're not just making it a mental health access line, we are combining HHSA into an access center. So we have multiple departments in HHSA that require a 24/7 response. So we have CPS, we have APS, we have IHSS, we have SUDT, substance abuse, and we have mental health. And so what we're doing is merging that. So currently, there's, I know there've been a lot of, of people who aren't exactly happy with our answering service after hours or on the weekend. And so what we've decided is to combine that into an access center. So you're giving it a live body, someone who can help you do whatever needs to be done. So you're calling about a CPS, you know, calling about CPS, they can go ahead and assess the situation right then, not say, "Someone will call you back in forty minutes." So it's really recreating a whole system. So we'll all funnel into, kind of like we, we said, like a dispatch center, someone who kind of explained it recently, it's like a dispatch. And they'll make sure that you're assessed and your needs are taken care of, and referred out to where you need to be, whether that's calling out an APS worker to come out and do an assessment, or whether or not it's referring you to RQMC. So it's going to be kind of like, that's what we're creating. We have interviews today for the access center. So we have not hired anybody for that yet, but we do have interviews today. And so that's kind of where we're at right now. We do have the answering service set up to take the calls until we're fully staffed. And then we have the staff who are on during the day, who will answer the line during the day.
Thank you. Supervisor McCown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I've been reviewing the memorandum of understanding table, and we have not even been able to complete MOUs, it appears, between agencies, between the, the provider and agencies that are completely controlled by the county. So, and then some of the MOUs, of course, involve outside agencies. So, you know, I'd appreciate an update on where we are with the MOUs. I mean, it, it looks like we're still in the process of scheduling meetings in some cases. And one specific question, where we say draft MOU outline emailed to all parties, define outline, is that just a list of elements that need to be in the MOU, or is it specific language of how those elements could be addressed with agreement of the parties?
So we are still developing MOUs. We are still working with everybody, and a draft outline MOU, it depends on which draft it is. So some of, so the drafts have a variety. Some of it is detailed language, and some of it is, there's questions, like, we have the category, but we still need to add, come together and answer that question. So we didn't put the language in, we put, it will have the question on, "Okay, this was brought up, we didn't resolve it, how are we resolving it so it can get put into the MOU?" So there's some sections we have language, there's some sections where we have questions that we still need to work on.
And is Lee Kemper consulting, assisting with the MOUs?
We haven't had him look at any of the MOUs at this point, because we don't have anything established, but we definitely, once we have a more established thing, we will send it to him for review.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, I think it might be appropriate for our contractor to address the board on the transition and how things are going.
Okay. Could you come up?
Good morning, Camille Schrader with RQMC. Would you like me to just?
How are things going?
Good. So, yes, so it was kind of hurry up and wait, and now we're finalizing contracts. We've received the, the contract from the county, and so now we're putting all of that language into the subcontracts with all of the providers, and making sure that especially outcome data, reporting documents, things like that are agreed upon. And then also making all the changes to the electronic health record to make all of that possible, which is quite a feat and technical beyond my scope. So there's quite a bit of that happening. We have a meeting with the fiscal to make sure that the cash flow projections work, because in order to reach that funding authority, we need to be able to draw down as much FFP as possible, and in order to do that, we have to be able to pay certified claims before we actually get paid for them. So making sure that we have some sort of account, we're trying to have everything as, at least as, much as possible, clearly identified ahead of time, so we know where things are. The training, all of the adult providers have been trained and actually continue to be trained on all of the, the sections of the mental health plan, and how documentation and charts and files and authorizations, and, and how RQMC does the work we do. They seem to be doing well. The capacity, especially Hospitality Center and Manzanita have increased their staffing and have accepted, I think there's thirteen to twenty referrals since June 1st, which are new adult referrals. So they're having a, a chance to sort of experience that. Frankly, the county has been incredible at trying to get the materials and data to RQMC so that we can open up the charts. We're really hoping, hoping to have everything in it on July 1st, so you could go right into, into providing the work. Crisis is, at this point, we are looking for a space on the coast. We may be revisiting a space that we had visited and talked to you about, Supervisor Jardy. Because we have met with the police, we met with the hospital, we met with clinics, we meaning the county, RQMC, and us in terms of working on the tentative MOUs, which is what you see, Supervisor McCown. There, there are so many specifics that need to get worked out, that you can't possibly work out in two months, that's the reason they haven't worked before. So we're referring to them as tentative MOUs, so that we get an opportunity over the next months after July to say, "Okay, how do we resolve some of those issues that are outstanding?" So we have something in place that we all agree to, and it's very clear in the document what we're still working on, which is actually our hope by, by those MOUs.
So that's the current status?
Yes.
You do have agreement on some items, and you've identified those areas that require additional work.
Yes. And we're hoping that all of that will be reflected in the MOU that you see. But we need everyone to agree to that, before we present it to you. So in terms of, we actually think, as a result of our meetings on the coast, that proportionally, the level of need for adult mental health response is, is significant on the coast, proportionally. So you think of it as a third of our population, but I think that we really are going to have to ramp up both RCS, probably youth project to a certain degree, and also Hospitality Center to full running, to be able to respond to the coastal issues. They're, they're complex, they probably have to do with dual diagnosis as well as SMI, but either way, and in all ways, it's going to have to have significant, significant ramping up over there. So we're looking at space, and we're looking at how to build outreach right away. Inland, we, all of it, like I said, all the providers have built their capacity and gotten their trainings in place, and I think that's all going... their trainings in place, and I think that's all going pretty well. And we hope to be taking over the old Sizzler Building, Physical Therapy Building on Perkins for Crisis, and we'll be launching a six-bed Crisis Residential inside of that as soon as we can get the building and have things worked out. We're actually talking to the hospital about what to do when they want to demolish that in a couple of years, is what we're thinking. So we're, everything's moving. We're feeling a little anxious, but not too bad. The big issue's going to be making sure that we provide the proper support to the clients and to the providers in helping the county be able to meet the med management effective July 1st. So Janine and the team have been talking a lot about how to make sure that we've attached to it, some sort of making sure the appointments are shared calendar, shared expectation of who the clients are that are coming, making sure that we're helping with transportation, and the purchasing of the medications, if in fact any of those kinds of things need to be done. So, we feel like we've got a really good partnership in terms of helping make sure all of that happens, because I know that there are tremendous amount of people concerned around making sure that medication management happens in a timely and effective fashion. So.
Supervisor McCown?
Well, thank you. And you, did you have another thought you wanted to add? So, you mentioned the significant need that's been identified on the coast, and you anticipate that you'll address that need by reallocating resources within the contracts that are currently projected in the contract amount?
Yes.
So the amount contracted for won't change, just how you manage your resources?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So I have a question on this, going back to that city council meeting, and one of the comments from all city council members who were there, and some members of the public, was they weren't sure that Fort Bragg could absorb, again, it was being presented as a homeless facility for people who had serious mental health issues. But, the question also had to do with, though, what exactly is the county providing in terms of mental health services on the coast? The impression was, all the mental health services were over in Ukiah, nothing was being offered. I'm just saying, that's the impression. You know, Hospitality Center, lots of questions about their quality of service. And, and so, I would request that the county and our QMC have a meeting on the coast to just say, here's what we're offering on the coast. We are here on the coast. The county is spending money, and we're providing service, and here's what the service looks like today on the coast. And, so I don't know what would be the best venue, I don't know, I don't know the schedule of the mental health board, I don't know if they're going to have another meeting on the coast in the next three or four months, or if we just should just have a standalone meeting. I think it'd actually be better if it was at nighttime, when people could go to the meeting, because again, there's a lot of adult parents of children with mental health issues that would probably like to show up if it was at six o'clock at night.
Yeah. So all of the above.
So would, like, September be realistic timeframe?
Sure. And also remember, so, we definitely have a significant contract with Hospitality Center, and as a result of the coastal cry, RCS is going to be willing to do some adult outpatient, so that there's access and choice. We thought that was going to be, so we'll have to see what level of service delivery that looks like, and we're definitely going to have to have a significant place for crisis response, and not necessarily technical 51-50 crisis as much as urgent, we need some sort of intervention, we need to connect with somebody right now, kind of urgent care. That's what it feels like. I understand why they think that on the adult side. It feels, it felt to us, actually it was Karen from the county that was with us, definitely, they're overwhelmed. The hospital's overwhelmed, the police are overwhelmed, they're overwhelmed. And again, it's hard to say whether that's substance abuse included in significant mental health behaviors or not. Until we get there, we won't know, and we know we're going to pay attention to it, you know? And the other two places that I know the county, especially MSHA and our QMC are looking at is Round Valley. Round Valley needs a particular level of attention and focus. Without us knowing what we should do, we need to have conversations and discussions to talk about what they feel like needs to be done as well. So, it won't, it's not an easy answer.
Okay, so September, I saw some nod in head.
Yes, September's fine.
So that sounds like a realistic timeframe for a meeting on the coast.
And maybe the Mental Health Board could look at doing that over there. We are also, as a part of the plan that Janine's talking about, our QMC also is working on a map of where cultural services are, where therapists are, where all the certified sites are, how many clinicians are there, and it'll be a baseline, and in terms of the coast, it'll have, it'll probably develop.
Okay, Supervisor Woodhouse?
I'm actually pretty impressed, though, at this stage of the game, that the subcontractors and RC3, the Crisis, has been able to fill their positions and are, there's some positive work being done. So, I feel less anxious about making sure that our three adult providers are ready.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to tell you, I'm very glad you're there. I'm giving you a gift you don't even realize by not calling you all the time to educate Supervisor Woodhouse. Today it was about 12 after 8:00, and I thought, oh, I'll just call her and ask her that, Tom. So I'm going to give you five more. I think it's so important that you're free to do what you have to do rather than spend the time, but eventually I'll break down. But I'm really glad you're there.
You're welcome to anytime.
It wouldn't be, you could be more effective elsewhere. I'm learning a lot. It takes a lot to understand this stuff to know the, to how to help, so thank you for being there.
It does, and thank you. Thank you for your confidence, and frankly, patience, and I really hope that everyone gives us a little bit of a chance to figure out what it all means and make the kind of changes that need to be made in response to those. So, there's a tremendous amount of people waiting to see, you know, what we do and where we go. Both we, meaning our QMC, and our county partner, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Not seeing anything else.
Okay.
Are you pretty much ready to wrap up?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, if you guys, hopefully we answered everything. We are, we are aware that we are going right into July 1st on a Friday, so it could, and a holiday. So we're definitely prepping for that, and I think we've, we've all joked on a sense that if we have to have tents set up on lawns to serve the clients July 1st, we would all be there to do that. And, as much as it's sort of a joke, I know that we all would be. And whatever we have to do to make this successful, we are willing to do, both county and our QMC, and I think we've made a lot of progress. I think there are some goals we will probably not meet, and will have to meet sort of as we come into July, but I have a lot of hope going into this new transition, and we have a great partner, so thank you.
Okay, thank you all, and we're going to take a break. We have a timed 10:30 item, which is item number 5C, discussion possible, acceptance of workshop presentation on community choice aggregation from Lean Energy and Sonoma Clean Power. So we'll take a break now at 10:24, and we'll reconvene at 10:30. We have a couple speakers from out of town, so I did want to accommodate this at 10:30. We will then immediately after that go back to our mental health contracts, which are still to be voted on. So, I'd like to lead off with Chris Shaver from the executive office.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Christopher Shaver, Deputy CEO, Executive Office. Today I bring before you is a community choice aggregation or community choice energy workshop. I have Sean Marshall with Lean Energy, and also Jeff Cyfers with Sonoma Clean Power. So today, Sean is going to go over the basics and some other information on community choice aggregation, and then Jeff Cyfers with Sonoma Clean Power will go further into details regarding Sonoma Clean Power and that community choice aggregation that they have. So without any further, I'll have Sean Marshall take over. Thank you.
Okay, good morning, Supervisors. Thank you very much for having me. My name is Sean Marshall, and there are the slides. Our time is somewhat limited this morning, so I'll be brief, but I just want to start by saying, thank you for having such a beautiful county. It's been delightful to spend the last 24 hours here, and I plan to come back with my kids in August. Got all that figured out on the way over the hill, so, thank you very much. We're going to start off with just some very brief, high-level comments on where community choice energy is in the state of California, some high-level trends, and then a recap of the options that you have before you. And then I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Jeff Cyfers, who is the CEO from Sonoma Clean Power, who will dive a little deeper into that, that particular option. So without further ado, I think all of you know and have seen some of these slides, that community choice energy is on a substantial growth trajectory in the state of California. Over the next five years, we anticipate that upwards of 25 counties representing hundreds of cities up and down the state of California will be served by community choice. There are currently four programs that are active, MCE, Sonoma Clean Power, Lancaster Choice Energy, which is in Southern California, and the most recent addition is the City of San Francisco, that has just completed enrollment for its first phase. We will also see San Mateo County come online in October of this year, with, as you can see, many more to follow over the next three to five years. So it's, it's an exciting and busy time for the field of community choice. Current trends, just very high level here. Overall, the energy market remains strong, and the timing for new programs is very good. So even though we're seeing a slight uptick in gas prices, it is juxtaposed by a drop in the exit fee. And so what we're seeing from all of the technical studies and analytics that are coming out right now from many of the other communities, is that CCE programs are able to compete quite well with PG&E, both on the environmental attributes as well as the cost attributes for the end-use customer. However, in 2017, we do anticipate a tightening in the market due to a couple of things. One is a proposed drop in generation rates that PG&E is proposing for the beginning of 2017, coupled with an increase in that exit fee, PCIA, Power Charge and Difference Adjustment, and as well as competition for carbon-free resources. My colleague to the right has a lot of that carbon-free resource, and what we're experiencing in other places is that large hydro in particular will be more challenging to get as we go out into the future. So this is something for you all to consider in terms of your overall timing and strategy, should you choose to move forward. There is a significant focus right now at the California Public Utilities Commission's, really ground zero for where community choice opportunity and frankly, risk lives. The focus right now is on reform of that power charge indifference adjustment exit fee. Many community choice programs around the state are working collaboratively on that effort, as well as fair implementation of the governor's SB 350, which you may remember last fall increased the renewable portfolio to 50% by 2030. It also carries with it a requirement for integrated resource planning that will impact community choice programs and their ability to remain autonomous. So, that's a high-level view. There are many, many proceedings that happen at the CPUC, they're a critical player, and frankly, they're somewhat of a mixed bag for CCE. But in general, so far, so good, and you can comment on that further if you wish. The growing number of community choice programs around the state will yield a greater market share in terms of wholesale power supply. We see that in the next five years, it's likely that upwards of 50% of the state could be served by community choice programs. What does that mean? That also means greater market power, the ability to sort of direct the terms and conditions and, you know, really get out there and compete with the large utilities for the power supply. There is also a developing opportunity for joint action and cost sharing among the existing community choice programs, and I think we'll, we'll hear and see a lot more about that coming up in 2017 and 18. But all of that really spells good news in terms of efficiency of operations and expenditures. Last thing I'll say is that the market and all of the market participants is really evolving and expanding right now in the state. It's super exciting to see when I was involved in Marin Clean Energy, which was first out of the gate in 2010, there was a pretty limited pool of suppliers and vendors that were willing to serve this field. And now we've seen that exponentially grow with greater benefits in terms of terms and conditions and contract provisions that are beneficial to the, to the customer and to the agency. So that's just the quick overview there. Now I'll quickly recap for you, what, some of what you have before you today are some choices, which is always a good thing. That's really the underpinning of what community choice energy is all about. So, you have before you some options, the first of which is to join an existing program. Sonoma Clean Power is the likely candidate for that, and Jeff will talk more about that. The second option is to form a new program, similar to what they would be doing in Alameda County, or San Mateo, or other places around the state, which would include the county and interested cities in your county. You would run that through a joint powers agency, and that carries with it obligations in terms of seed capital and staffing and all of those other things, but it would basically be a county-wide program. The other way you could do that is through a vendor-financed or vendor-managed option, similar to what they're doing up in Humboldt. And then a third option that has been put on the table for exploration is the possibility of a partnership with the City of Ukiah's electric company. They would not become a CCA, that is actually prohibited. However, that utility could provide administrative services to run the community choice program on behalf of the county. So there are a couple of considerations that I just want to point out for your decision-making, and then Jeff will, will take off from there, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at the end. Couple of considerations as you think about these options. One is cost, seed capital as well as human capital. How are you going to staff it? How are you going to pay for it? The good news is that upfront costs are fully reimbursable through the revenues of the program, typically within 12 to 24 months of program launch. Another consideration is mission alignment. So if you are looking to join another program, making sure that both your environmental policies and your economic policies are in alignment for your customers in the county. And the third element, I would say, would be the issue of governance, and just making sure that the representation is there in a way that really matters in terms of decision-making on behalf of your constituents. So with that, I will wrap up and turn it over to Jeff.
All right, well, thank you. That was a great intro. I think you may have read in the news that PG&E just announced this morning they're going to be closing the last nuclear power plant in California in the year 2025, and they stated the reason for that was significantly due to the loss of load from community choice programs. So, we're having an impact on California. And, so I think what, what I want to do, oh, I guess I should use this one, is reiterate that you have options, and reiterate that we're supportive regardless of the option you choose. We want to be a resource to you. Our win is that Mendocino gets cleaner power, and its customers can save some money when it's possible to do so. We would like to be an option for you, and our board is nearing the point where a more formal offer can be made, and I'm sorry, we don't have that today, but I believe that that is probably coming in the near future. And, so the, this talk is really about what it would be like to have Sonoma Clean Power as a provider. And the first couple of slides you've probably seen before, but I think in, in public, when we're talking about this, it's good to just quickly recap that community choice doesn't take over what PG&E earns its profit on. PG&E still does all of the wires, all of the transformers, all of the delivery, and that's what they earn 100% of all of their profit on, and they don't lose any staff. What they, what we do is we take over the sources. So we change where the electricity comes from, and make sure those are from cleaner sources, and wherever possible, less expensive as well. And, we currently serve the whole county of Sonoma, minus Healsburg, which, like Ukiah, has its own municipal utility, and our board is now, has been seriously considering offering service to Mendocino as well. The two options that we have, just to take another minute on the recap, currently our basic default service is called Clean Start, and it's at 37% renewable energy today, and we've already contracted to grow that to 50% renewable by 2020, and that's 10 years ahead of the state's goals. So the state is intending to hit 50% by 2030. And our rates are 2% lower on total electric bills, when all charges and fees are included, starting July 1 with the new rate change. So as you can see, we have competitive rates, but that's not the primary thing. We often likely won't be able to beat PG&E by large margins. It's going to be a competitive business. The real alternative that's an optional rate is for, is available to any of our customers, and they can sign up for 100% renewable energy called Evergreen. And what's innovative is, that's entirely made inside our service. where Evergreen is made to include Mendocino County as well, and make renewable projects that are built here possible to feed into that system. The premium for that is 2.5 cents a kilowatt hour, and for a home, that averages out to about 13% extra per month. So that's an alternative that we offer to all our customers. And just a quick summary of kind of some of the things we've achieved in the first two years of service. We've actually completed construction on 70 megawatts of new solar energy in California. We've contracted to build 15 megawatts of new solar inside our county and our footprint, and we expect that most of that will be completed by the end of next year. We also have contracted for 50 megawatts of local geothermal from the Calpine facility, and we're in the midst of negotiating a new project to replace existing turbines that have a history of killing birds with new turbines that are more bird-friendly. And we've paid out $890,000 to customers who own solar energy but make more than they use. And this is a new system. We call it Net Green. And we've also just recently, in the last board meeting, approved 3.5 million to support local programs. I expect that is fairly similar to future-year expenditures on programs, but that's a number that could go up and down a lot based on market conditions, because if power prices go up, we may need to reduce how much we're spending on programs in that year. And then we've also been able to provide some bill relief to customers, $50 million so far on customer bill savings. Net Green is a program that we do pay that premium on, and that was the major innovation, but really that came about because of local control. Having local decision-making over rates is really one of the big features, I think, of Community Choice. And then I think to kind of dive into some of the details of what service would be like, just a reminder that state law requires that this is a default program, that we do serve customers automatically unless they choose to opt out. The only exceptions to that that we've managed to get approved are if a customer has a contract with somebody for power other than PG&E. We don't have to become their default provider, and that's often called direct access. And so if you have a big industrial customer that has a contract with some other energy provider, we can simply offer service to them, but we don't have to be their default. So we wouldn't break any contracts. But this is important for the public to understand, is that they would get notices. They would have two before service starts and two following any start of service. They would notify them of all their options, and they could opt out if they want to. And if they don't, they would be served by Sonoma Clean Power. And anybody moving in the territory to a new home or moving into Mendocino County would get two notices, so if that's a new service. And they would also be given those same options, but the default would also apply. The bill is simple. We add a line item to the front page. Well, no, the bill is incredibly complicated. Our part is simple. We do add a single line item to the first page that shows the electric generation costs as distinct from delivery charges. All of the details, and they are very complex unfortunately in electric bills, follow on the following pages, but the front part's easy to understand for customers. But it would still just be one bill from PG&E. And then diving into the kind of depth of, I think, decision-making before this board today and in the coming months, local control of our customer programs is, I think, one of the biggest features of Community Choice. And so one of the things that we've done since we launched is make a determination that providing energy efficiency support and support for local renewable energy isn't the only thing we can be doing. So as the graphic in the lower right indicates, we've actually turned to thinking a lot about electric vehicles for a lot of reasons, but one of them is it can reduce emissions and costs for our customers. The other is if we can charge them at daytime locations, we can actually support more solar energy by doing that. Solar only makes energy in the daytime, and within five or six years, we're expecting that that will be a problem because there's so much solar energy in the state. We'd like to solve that problem because we don't think building less solar is necessarily the solution. It's actually one of the cheapest sources of energy today. So switching from driving on gasoline that was imported from somewhere far away to driving on locally-made renewable energy is, in our view, a win-win, and the costs seem to work out. And so this is one of our new focuses. And whether or not that resonates with Mendocino County isn't even the point. The point is, we could make that decision because with Community Choice, we had funding available locally, decision-making available locally, and we were able to make that change fairly quickly when we went through that process. So on to risks, and I think this is important to spend whatever time you need on. The summary I'll provide is that there are a lot of kinds of risks of Community Choice, and there's different ways of addressing each kind of risk. And it's our view that with the exception of regulatory risk, we've done a really good job of addressing each of them in normal business ways. Regulatory risk is a bit of a wild card for us because it's a political game. How we are regulated at the CPUC is largely driven by votes in the legislature. And so the strategy there is emerging and becoming much stronger, but I think we're still new to that world. So our trade association that we're forming right now with the operating CCAs is going to help, and I think more programs emerging in California, thanks to Lean and others, is going to help as well because it's lending that voice. But we're really at the beginning of having a strong voice in Sacramento. And so that's an area where I want to be really honest, that if a bill were to pass that were to compromise these programs, it could have a harmful impact on Community Choice programs. The other kinds of risks, though, can be significant, but they can also be addressed through normal strategies. So the fact that we need to predict our customer load, how much energy they want at any given hour and any given day, is a science, and we have good backward-looking data, and we have good forward-looking weather forecasts, and we watch housing trends and other things. And so our error on that is fairly moderate. It's not too big and fairly well-managed. In terms of trying to figure out how to match our supply to our load, in the past, the world has mainly looked at controlling power plants and other sources to match load. Where we're going in the future and what we've already begun doing is also beginning to match loads to match supply. And the reason that's important is most of the kinds of renewable energy that are cheap, like solar and wind, don't run when you turn on and off a switch. They run when the wind blows or when the sun shines. And as a result, as California gets more and more of that, it's important to be able to have loads that can ramp up and down, so customer loads, to follow the supply, not just supply to match load. And so another reason we're interested in electric cars is there's now a platform that we're working on deploying that can make small changes in how fast an electric car is charging to guarantee it's using renewable energy rather than having to draw from fossil resources. And that can be done with no impact to the driver. They can still get the same charge they were going to get before. It can be transparent in the sense that it can tell you exactly what it's doing, and you can get a discount on what you pay at the EV charging when you do that. So that's exciting and something that we're able to do, again, because of local control. But we do manage our supply portfolio, assuming we're going to be regulated even more heavily in the future. Today, it is possible to have a portfolio that significantly consists of short-term renewable contracts, and the law doesn't really obligate currently a lot of long-term procurement and price stability. It would be a shame if that was the way a program was run, because by having significant numbers of long-term contracts, by actually buying even some of our natural gas power, we do have today, it's 19% power from natural gas, we are now bought out fully through 2020. In fact, we did that contract in December because prices were favorable, and that allowed us to have some certainty. And long before 2020 is here, we're going to start looking at, again, forward contracts and watching the market and buying out further. And that kind of short-term, medium, and long-term contract portfolio is one of the strategies we use to manage that supply cost risk. The next area on regulatory, I mentioned the kind of CPUC and legislative risks. There are much more minor risks associated with the other agencies that regulate us, so we report to a number of agencies, federal and state. And the kinds of changes that occur and impacts from the other agencies are relatively minor compared to the CPUC. So that agency is really kind of where the friction between PG&E and the Community Choice programs really emerges and where it's usually addressed. And then in terms of contracts, I mentioned having some long-term power contracts. The kinds of risks that we have in that kind of arena are really like, what if a supplier doesn't complete construction on time and we're left without that delivery of energy? Or what if, for example, in the Lake County fire, what if a geothermal unit goes offline that was serving us? And that actually happened. And so the way we address that is by having different kinds of elements. The first is, in the contracts, we do have collateral, so if a developer can't complete a project on time, we can collect a cash collateral payment and use that to offset any increased costs in the market. So that's built into contracts. The next is to have a diversity of sources. We already have 13 active suppliers from a number of different facilities around California and a few from outside California, and that diversity helps us guard against the risk of different kinds of disasters, whether it be wildfire, earthquake, or whatever. And also from failure of a company. So if a given energy company is going to fail, probably whoever takes them over will continue supplying energy, but we don't want to take on that risk from too great a percentage in the portfolio. The last area, and this might be the most important, is how the county and each of the cities participating is protected from the risks of a joint powers authority. And this is something we spend a lot of time on. Our cities that are already participating really wanted to have deep assurances. And so the first, for obvious reasons, the first thing to point out is that because this is operated, Sonoma Clean Power is a distinct joint powers authority, its assets and debts are not part of our participating cities in our county. And the good part about that is California law is very clear that the debts of Sonoma Clean Power are not the debts of the participating members. The bad part, although I think the trade-off's worth it, is that the assets, the cash in the agency, can't be transferred out for paving roads or for doing something in a general fund. And I think that trade-off's valuable because it's a clarity of purpose. It's like, these funds were collected for energy purposes, they will be used for energy purposes. But we also, at the request of the City of Santa Rosa, made sure that anybody participating, any city participating or the county in the program, didn't need to be called a member. It could be called a participant. This is a little bit of splitting hairs. Our attorney assures us the distinction is minor at best because participants have full voting rights. They have full access to all elements of the program and can vote on changes to the JPA. But for the City of Santa Rosa, it made a difference. They felt better protected because of that. And we also contain contracts in our supply agreements that simply reiterate state law and says, in the event of a default on our part, you can come after the assets of the JPA, and that's it. And if there aren't enough there, you're out. And so it makes that plain to anybody who's supplying energy. I was also asked about what this program would cost to the County of Mendocino to participate. And while there isn't a formal letter before you, I can share that our board's discussion has been that there would be no cost to the County of Mendocino or the participating cities, and that to achieve that, we would really need to launch in early summer. And so early summer of 2017 is what we've been aiming toward. And the reason is, summer rates allow the agency to collect some net income because summer rates tend to be higher for commercial customers and any residential customers with variable rates. And so in terms of working from that date, we've really been trying to gear up and finalize some changes to the JPA in at Sonoma Clean Power that would change the governance structure. The current governance structure requires that any participating member have a seat on the Board of Directors. And the discussion on our board has been that as we explore expansion, we'd like to explore whether it be one additional seat per county, so one seat per county coming on, or whether it be one seat per county plus another seat for large cities or large amounts of population. So what I think is fair to consider today is that the likely offer, when I assume it's going to come, will say there'll be one seat on the board for Mendocino County to be determined by the county and its member cities. And it could include an additional seat, based on the discussions we've had so far, but I wouldn't assume that today. I would assume that there'd be one seat on that board. And that also, another essential part of the decision is that an ordinance and a resolution is passed by each jurisdiction that wants service for its residents and businesses. That's a process that, for an ordinance, takes two readings, and so when we're looking at the schedule, I'll make some comments about that. And then I think the last point on decisions is that, I think this is really important to consider carefully, and I think you have been, you've been taking your time. And the reason is, it should be considered permanent. There are ways of unwinding this and separating a program in the future, but it can take many years. And the reason is, when we enter into the best-price contracts for energy, we get the best prices when we make long-term commitments. And some of those commitments today are already 25 years. It wouldn't take 25 years to pull two counties apart in the future, but it could easily take seven, maybe eight, maybe 10. And so I want to express that I think that signals that, to have a no-cost proposition, meaning that nobody's going to end up holding any costs as a result. And I think that tells me that taking the care you're taking is wise. So the costs I mentioned, the other part of costs, meaning that there would be no cash expenses for Mendocino to be a part of this program. But two points on that. One is, starting in early summer makes a big difference. The other is, if the board, if our board, has concerns about the startup expenses' impact on our current customers, I think the easy way to solve that is to simply have a small delay in the rollout of customer programs in Mendocino to recover that for the general purpose of Sonoma Clean Power. And the kind of time scale we're talking about is three to six months of a delay of customer programs, and I think it wouldn't be a huge impact. But one thing I would be very interested in doing is having a full-time staff member be hired by Sonoma Clean Power from the local area for the purpose of serving as a key liaison up here, somebody who can help with outreach. And I would hope to do that as soon as a decision were made, if you chose to go with Sonoma Clean Power, so that it's well in advance of any service. I think it's good to have a resource for people to call who knows this area better than I do, knows it better than our customer service staff do, and that would be important. And again, that wouldn't need to cost Mendocino money, but I think it'd be something that I would really appreciate staff's help with outreach, because finding the right person here would be valuable. So the kind of timeline, and this is draft, but the kind of timeline to reach, let's call it a June 1 service start next year, which is feeling a little bit easier than May 1, would be that if all of those decisions, if Mendocino County passed an ordinance and any city that wanted to participate either by that date or shortly thereafter, we'll have to come up with that date, I think no more than a month later, were to pass an ordinance and resolution as well requesting service, and that the formal offer from Sonoma Clean Power is made, so that there's a decision there. The kinds of actions that we take at that point are to update our implementation plan, which is a formality, but it's an important one. We can't serve you without a certified plan. The CPUC does review that, but they don't really have the ability to reject it unless it's incomplete. So as long as we fulfill all the requirements of the statute, but that can take a couple of months. The CPUC does review that, but they don't really have the ability to reject it unless it's incomplete. So as long as we fulfill all the requirements of the statute, but that can take a couple of months. They're technically allowed 90 days, but we're seeing that they usually get it done in 45 to 60. We then want to finalize energy contracts, and that's a little bit quick, but I think it works. And then start customer noticing, let's see, that's about 75 days in advance of service. And what that allows us to do is have a couple weeks before service starts in mid-May, when all the data work can happen and we can make sure it's done cleanly. So if we were aiming for an early summer launch in 2017, this implies a number of decisions by early October. And I think, I'm happy to work with staff on providing draft ordinances and resolutions, and I think we could do that following this meeting, if that's of interest. And I think maybe we do that anyway, so you can see what those look like. There is an alternative, and there's always an alternative. But I think if this timeline slipped, or if it felt too aggressive, or if there wasn't enough time to answer all the questions, we could look at an alternative, and that's essentially pushing it back about 11 months to a May 1, 2018 service start. And that's a long time to push it back, but the reason why pushing it back three or four or five months isn't so great is, now there's an actual cost to the program to start, because we're starting in the winter months when we break even at best typically in the winter. There's a six-month summer season and a six-month winter season to the utility rates. And so that means it would take longer to recover the startup costs of serving Mendocino. It might get a little messier in terms of the agreement of how to share those costs, because I think it would probably imply a longer delay on efficiency programs. And we could do that. So I'm not saying that's off the table to do a fall or a winter launch. But what feels easiest would be either early summer of next year or the following year. This is cushy. This has lots of wiggle room. So if we, if the schedule slipped to 2018, we got lots of time to work on things and do more outreach. What might be most likely, if the county's inclined, is to start with the county and any cities wishing to participate in 2017, and then have a second round that says, any city that wants to take more time and learn about this and watch it, can take their time. And then we could do a second round in 2018. And so that may be the other option. And I'll pause there, because I know that's a lot, but I'd love to take any questions.
Supervisor Brown?
Well, I think this is more of a statement. We, when we originally looked at Sonoma Clean Power, I think we were told a startup date could be May 2017. So that's what I have always been looking at. And so I was glad to see your time schedule shows up.
Supervisor McCown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think you indicated earlier that the potential for this program was to generate approximately $500,000 in program revenue within Mendocino County on an annual basis. And then, the way things are currently structured, or if Mendocino were to become a part of Sonoma Clean Power, would you anticipate then that that program income would be reserved for projects in Mendocino County?
Yeah, so the $500,000 estimate is a rough estimate, and it will be higher and lower depending on the year. And so I just want to say that. And that estimate is specifically for the amount of population in Mendocino County. And so I think, I think there's some efficiency in offering same kinds of programs across the two counties that would be significant in terms of call center training and staffing and so forth. If Sonoma Clean Power is the administrator of efficiency programs, I think we'd want to have similar programs across the two counties. But as far as offering those programs, we would certainly make sure that proportional to population at least, we would want to have equal effort in the counties, in all the regions. And spending as well. And I think what we might do is do that somewhat after the fact and say, let's target equal spending, but at the end of the year, let's do an accounting and see where we landed. And then let's target again next year, so that we keep a recurring check-in, rather than saying, in order to get one in Mendocino, you need to have three in Sonoma County. That, to me, feels awkward. But there is an alternative, and I wanted to offer that, something I've shared with staff, and this has only been done at the staff level so far, is to brainstorm, what if? What if Mendocino wished to run its own energy efficiency programs very distinctly and have its own independent budget? I think that may be an option. And I think the way that could work is if Mendocino formed a joint powers authority for the purpose of administering efficiency programs and related programs, and had a clear enough purpose that it was compliant with all the state laws, because we're collecting money out of rates, so it has to be spent on energy-related work. But then could be funded by Sonoma Clean Power. And I think that option is available whether it's a distinct JPA, or whether it's a JPA that gets support from Ucaia's utility or some other method. But I think that's an option we've only in the last week tossed around at staff level. And so it's not well-vetted yet, but it's something that if you wanted to consider, we would certainly discuss it with our council and find an option for that.
Personally, I would favor gaining more information on that option. Given that, you know, you're informing us that essentially the decision is effectively permanent, I think we ought to have as much information as we can upfront about different options of how the program is designed. Now, the dictate that program revenue has to go only for energy-related projects potentially could change based on the City of Redding appeal before the Supreme Court. And do you have, you know, an opinion on, how far could that go, depending on what the Supreme Court may say? Is there room within there that they may actually say that the County of Mendocino, if it chose to use a portion of its program income to pave roads, could do so?
So, I'm not a count, I'm not an attorney, so I can't answer with any legal certainty, but what I would say is, it's safe to assume, or it's safest to assume, that you will need to spend any money collected from ratepayers on energy-related work. I think to assume anything else at this point before the courts decide would be probably not smart.
Understood. But pending the court's decision, is there a possibility that the court could rule that in effect, program income from a CCA could effectively be transferred to the general fund for other projects?
So that would need to be decided by the governing board of the program. And it is a policy decision, and Sean pointed that out, and I thank you. It's not something we've even considered, partly for the reason that it's not only the courts that have a voice on this. The courts certainly have the necessary voice, but our customers do as well. And our customers have been clear during our formation, they want, they want a firewall. They want, and here's why. As soon as, and we've had a number of customers tell us this, as soon as you can take money out of the program, what's to stop you from putting money into it? And what's to stop the liability being transferred? If you can show that you can take money out of Sonoma Clean Power to pave roads, then why isn't there a reasonable court case that Sonoma Clean Power should be liable for paving the roads? Or funding a pension, or doing something like that? So I think-
I'm going to go back to you're not a lawyer.
Yeah, that, fair enough. I am not.
But that, frankly, that's an option that I would like to explore, is, would it be possible for Mendocino County to have some degree of autonomy over how program income generated by Mendocino customers are ultimately used, rather than have it all default to Sonoma Clean Power and the Sonoma Clean Power JPA Board?
Yes. I believe that probably is an option, and it's the kind of option that we're exploring right now.
Thank you. And one further thing, I'm, I believe our staff has had some conversations with City of Ucaia, which of course, like Healsburg, is part of the Northern California Power Agency, and potentially, they could be a good partner for energy purchase or energy generation projects. And I'll just ask, to your knowledge, would Sonoma Clean Power be open to exploring those possibilities?
We're happy to. I suspect there wouldn't be advantage to the general portfolio of purchasing energy, but there probably would be an advantage to partnering with NCPA and the City of Ucaia. We've already set up partnerships, for example, with the City of San Francisco, to explore sharing owned assets for hydropower and renewables and so forth. And I think that, that does open some doors. And so I think having, having that partnership would be fantastic.
Thank you. Okay, we do have a couple speaker cards. I'd like to call up Joel Chabon, followed by Julia Peters.
Yeah, thank you. My name is, am I on? Yeah, thank you. My name is Joel Chabon. I'm from Wallala. We've lived there 17 years, and I'm part of an informal organization there on the South Coast called Power Local Mendonoma. And we have put on several workshops encouraging people to put rooftop solar, install solar on their roofs, and we continue to do that. And we've been successful in getting a number of people to do that. One of the things that we're very interested in is encouraging commercial businesses on the South Coast to put solar on the roof. For example, the grocery store, the surf market in Wallala spends $7,000 to $8,000 a month on electrical energy. The theater in Point Arena spends $700 to $800 a month on electrical energy. And as you know, it's difficult for these small businesses to make it on the coast. And anything we can do to encourage any kind of cost savings through rooftop solar is what we're doing. You know, we'd like to see more incentives in terms of better rates with electrical, for both electrical energy usage and generation, to make the payback on rooftop solar go from seven to 10 years to more like five to seven years. And we're hoping that, you know, you will not delay too long a decision on community choice aggregation. And I would very much in support of Sonoma Clean Power. We've been watching their progress for the last four years. Before they actually began delivering energy, we had them come out and speak on the coast. And we respect very much what they've done and how successful they've been in the two years that they've been actually delivering energy now. It's projected that over the next five years, 50% of California counties will have CCAs in operation. In other words, everyone should understand that this is truly an idea whose time has come. It's time to move forward, whilst Sonoma Clean Power is inviting our participation. You know, and we admire the fact that Mendocino County has already put in place the Mendocino County Energy Pace Program. And that's one of the things that we promote when we do our workshops on the South Coast. The intention of CCA model works towards the production of greenhouse gas emissions, I'm sorry, the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, and the increased use of renewable power. And this is our objective in doing our workshops. And Sonoma Clean Power is a not-for-profit agency. Anyway, the timetable is two years from today. If you look at the timetable up there, that puts it almost two years away. And I'd just like to ask you not to weigh the decision that you seriously consider Sonoma Clean Power. They've been there from the inception. They fought against the odds of the power companies, the PG&E, fighting against their efforts. And, you know, they've got the scars, and they've earned it. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Julia Peters?
Hi, I'm Julia Peters, a resident here in Mendocino County in Comanche, and also co-founder of Local Power with Paul Fenn. And Paul actually wrote the law, IB 117, that created community choice. And we've worked both as a nonprofit and consultant with Sonoma in San Francisco and a lot of other places across the state, to fully realize the local value of community choice, which I think Sonoma has done so many great things in that, toward that direction. But whether you go with Sonoma or not, I think it's very important to be clear that the real point of community choice is to sort of upend the paradigm of your centrally-controlled and burned fossil fuel, or even centrally-generated fuel by renewable resources, to build bottom up and very much look at where Mendocino is using energy and how to make it coincident, connect it to where you're actually generating energy. And to look at the population of Mendocino and how Mendocino can best really gain value from that, from keeping the assets, what you generate through the community choice program, in Mendocino. So not just looking at homeowners who can benefit from the tariffs and getting solar on their roofs, who are not necessarily such a large number of people, but all of the renters and others, lower-income folks, who can connect to microgrid or more what are called behind-the-meter resources. Energy efficiency, giving LEDs to everybody, you know, going in and putting automation and switches into homes to vastly reduce energy use through energy efficiency, to connect up through more of microgrid sources that make sense where they're generated in your, you know, your commercial district in Ucaia have more solar, and your windy hills of Willets have more wind, and connecting those energy uses. So as much as possible, you're reducing what you're getting from your supplier. For example, Lancaster has done a forecast load where they actually are reducing what they're getting from a supplier, which typically will provide what are called renewable energy credits, green energy on paper. It's not necessarily meaning that you're producing more green energy, although increasingly it will push toward that, that goal because of the number of CCAs in California. So that, so moving more behind the meter, not putting the electrons out into the grid, but, but keeping those benefits here locally, and in particular, I would say, as it relates to job creation, lower skilled job creation, getting people around into installation of renewable resources, but also the energy efficiency side, how it is that you could partner, you know, with Mendocino College to begin those training programs and ramp up the real local jobs opportunity here in Mendocino as well. Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers on this agenda item? Okay, not seeing any. Well, I'll just start off by saying that I've been very supportive of the county moving forward with this, and have long thought that Sonoma was the most logical choice for Mendocino County. You have a proven track record. There were some other parties that were sort of in the wings that were startups and didn't really have that track record. So I think it makes a lot of sense. We also work with Sonoma Clean Power slash the Sonoma County Water Agency, which I know kind of fronted some of the money to create Sonoma Clean Power, with our partnership that the county is a part of in terms of the North Coast partnership. So I've seen presentations from your group for a few years. I know Supervisor Brown has, and Supervisor McCown, because we've all at different times served on that seven-county group. And so I think we already are, in some ways, working with you and are aware of what you're doing. And so I think it makes, it'd be very simple to kind of have you help us roll out a program here, whether it's run independently in terms of the, this $500,000 a year, which we know there's an asterisk next to it, but for, for on-the-ground programs in Mendocino County, or whether we simply have you roll that program into Mendocino County. And I, I'm not convinced one is better than the other at this point. I think either could be better than the other, but, you know, I have a high-level confidence in your group, so there might be efficiency of scale, you've already created websites, you know, it might be simpler for the consumer just to go to one web, you know, but, but maybe there's a better way of doing it locally within Mendocino County. The one thought, this is the first time I've ever heard anybody actually mention the number of board members that would come from Mendocino County. And while I haven't necessarily assumed that each city in Mendocino County, because we do have smaller cities, would necessarily each get a vote, you know, I do look at Cotati at 7,000 population, Sonoma, 7,500, Cloverdale, 8,000 something, and, you know, Fort Bragg's over 7,000, Willets is five. And, and I think one way of looking at this might be to look at LAFCO. So within Mendocino County, our- way of looking at this might be to look at LAFCO. So within Mendocino County, our LAFCO, I believe the cities together get together and they select two of the board members on LAFCO. There tends to be one from inland Mendocino County, one from the coast. And I think there's some advantages to letting the cities maybe getting together and picking a representative to go onto this board. It would also give them an incentive to join Sonoma Clean Power and to stay actively involved in it. They do, the cities do tend to communicate with each other in some ways more often than they communicate with the county and the county with the cities. So I would like to see a proposal come from Sonoma Clean Power's board that there would be at least two votes for Mendocino County, understanding that Ukiah is not a part of it because they have their own system. But with two, with the county appointing one person and the cities appointing one, that again, amongst themselves, between Willets, Fort Bragg, and Point Arena, they would have to decide who that person is. There'd be, I think, buy-in from all three, assuming they all three joined. And if one or the other holds out and doesn't join right away, well, then the, say, the two that join right away would be the ones who would pick the person for the first term. I'm assuming each appointee has a term that they're appointed, you know, two or three years is, four years is typical. So there'd be a chance, like if one of the cities joined later, they would have a voice in the selection at that later point. So that's just my thought. Because again, I'm just reacting to the fact that I'm hearing for the first time that there may be one or two seats for Mendocino County, and nobody had said anything about that prior to just now. And I think, again, two would be kind of a minimum for Mendocino County. And I think the logical way would be let the cities pick one. Again, finally, they have a nighttime population that's not tremendous. But on the other hand, as we all know, the daytime population of the cities is really about double their nighttime population. Most jobs occur in the cities. People come into town during the day. Schools generally are located in the cities. So their daytime population really is double their nighttime population. And therefore, I think it justifies, you know, one from the cities and one from the county. So those are my thoughts. Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think I've, you know, shared some of my thoughts already. I'm frankly less concerned about whether there would be one or two board members, more concerned about what degree of control participating entities in Mendocino County, cities and counties, may have over some share of program income. The thought that we would have our own administration doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I guess I'm open to hearing about that. But I think in terms of administering the array of programs, obviously, the economies of scale would be to have SCP staff run all of that. I'm curious about one more thing. Do we have any indication, and of course, we know the courts act in their own good time, but do we have any rough guesstimate of when the court may rule in the current case pending before them?
You're talking about reading?
Yes.
I do not. I have not actually been following that case recently.
Okay. All right. And we do have until approximately July 1st, as we see by the timeline, for this board to make a decision if we were intent on moving forward and gaining the advantages that you discussed with an early summer rollout.
So I think, I think if, I'll look to staff, but I think if an ordinance were introduced in, I guess the goal would be to have a second reading by the end of September, beginning of October.
Yes, we'd have to introduce it in late July or early August.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that's the timeline.
Okay. Supervisor Woodhouse?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are a lot of questions, and educating the public has always been my concern. If they're not behind this, we're kind of pushing it up a hill. I don't want to be doing that. But it's hard to get their attention until we approve something, and then they'll come out.
Right.
So we could pretend to approve it, and we'd have a big meeting after that. I obviously don't want to be in a position where we are charging more than PG&E. That would be the end of our political careers up here. And so we are concerned, I am concerned, about the risks. And still intrigued about how you buy the power cheaper. But when you say the competition for the cleaner energy is getting tighter, that makes a lot of sense because there's a limited amount. And I wondered why that wouldn't be an incentive. So that I see as the biggest pressure to moving it forward and how that resolves itself when you're bidding against powerful people for those limited dollars. If they want them, they could pay more than market share to get them. And so it's difficult. The illusion that everybody's going to do this or want to pay more on their bill to save the environment, I think the numbers show there aren't many people that actually do that, but I admire them. I agree with Supervisor McCowen about duplicating the administration of this seems illogical. That would eat into our profits. And it'd be nice to take a quick look at the rough cost comparisons. But asking our government to do more of this and get more scattered out, we have plenty of other challenges. And that's my concern, is we not get spread out on things that could become an energy drain. And I appreciate the honesty about the length of time to get it out of the thing. I think being real honest about the drawbacks and the risks is important because there are risks to everything we do. And in our conversation, somehow, we'll need to have it with a full board of the intention of the monies. There's a great argument to say, put it towards local, clean energy development. And that's something that our community could believe in. And then the needs where we would spend it elsewhere. So it's very much like our going up for a tax for ourselves, that public questions our ability to not withdraw the money we're spending and just replace it with their money. So I think it's a similar challenge with the public, understanding what the purpose of this is. But first, the board has to be clear on what our purpose is. So I appreciate the presentation. There's a lot to learn and a lot of questions. But I'm, I was at first very reluctant to get involved in some of their potential problem, but I'm reluctantly interested. And your good reputation does matter. And so there'll be some hard questions between now and any final decision, but I am not opposed to it.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think you brought up rate risk in terms of, you know, what is the risk that rates could go over the competition or the alternative? And I think it's smart to go into this with the assumption that that could happen. It hasn't happened for Sonoma Clean Power really yet. But we also saw a massive rate decrease by PG&E on January 1 and a massive increase on their fees to our customers all on the same day. And we only knew the final numbers for that three days before it happened. That goes back to regulatory risk. Now, it turned out, we had enough savings that we weathered that. And the worst-case scenario was customers in one class were paying about 1% more, and we fixed that. We got it done pretty quickly. And so that didn't go on very long. But I think that kind of thing can happen. And I think it's smart to go into this knowing that when you don't control your competitors' rates, you can see that kind of thing happen. I think what we can say is always true, is that we can always have lower emission power. We can always do more for local energy. We can always invest a greater share of dollars in our local region. And we can usually provide lower cost rates. But that last one is important to be honest about. And so far, we've managed to do it every month in two years. And it looks good going forward. But even out five years, it looks reasonably good. But I can't guarantee you that it will always be cheaper.
So there's a slim possibility that rates could go up, our rough $500,000 could be squeezed, or we'd be charging the 500,000 to keep our cash flow commitments, and then charging more than PG&E. So that would put us in a very difficult position if we're taking that money. Do I not understand those facts?
Let me make sure I heard you right. So I think we would want to set this up so any expenditures on programs doesn't obligate you, doesn't obligate anyone's general fund to ever feed money back into the program. That, in my view, that's just good practice. You never obligate that. So the question mark is, do you get between zero and a large amount of money? Where in that spread, but never negative? I don't think that should ever, I think the design of the program should be such that it never goes that way. And as a result, I think it'd be smart for any multi-year program activities to be only built out after there's a program reserve, after there's a reserve budget for programs. So that in the first year, maybe we spend 50% of what we have available on programs, and we sock away half of it. And then we start talking about multi-year programs only after there's a reserve. And staffing as well. I don't think it's smart to make a staffing decision based on a 12-month funding. So I think that's the kind of thinking that I would encourage. And the kind of thinking that we've done already at Sonoma Clean Power.
Okay, so we've had the presentation. We've had public comment. Are you looking for a motion here?
Yeah, we are looking for a recommendation from the board to direct staff to bring CCA formation to the next available meeting for board authorization, to either formally declare interest in Sonoma Clean Power membership, or direct staff to pursue other CCA options.
I will move the recommended motion that Mr. Shaver just discussed with us.
Okay, is there a second? Supervisor McCowen, are you making a second? Supervisor Woodhouse, are you making a second? Are you going to make a second to the motion?
I guess, yes, if we're saying, bring us forward something to consider, and there'll be a lot of hard questions, and we really need to get the public involved because they're not engaged at this point. So I don't know how you do that.
Chair, if I may, in regards to public outreach and education, to date, we've conducted nine public outreach and education meetings throughout the county. And we can plan to continue to do so in terms of that. So getting the word out is an effort we're making. And Sonoma Clean Power, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, is also committed to, you know, assisting on that and helping get the word out.
Could I ask the follow-up? I just know from our road things and all the things I'm involved in, it's very hard to get large groups out that are actively having questions and learning together and excited about this. I don't think we have that kind of momentum. Any idea from the nine meetings, were there 20 people at each one, or any rough guesstimate of, because I know you're putting out the effort. I don't question that at all. I just question what the response is, not out of disrespect.
Yeah, I can estimate on average, you know, roughly 20 people. Today, we also are incorporating a meeting with a Rotary group for luncheon today. So we're looking at to where we can piggyback on other meetings that are occurring to where we have that captive audience.
Okay. Supervisor McCowen?
First, I'd like to clarify the status of the motion that was made.
So go ahead and re-
Well, I mean, is that-
You second.
Supervisor Woodhouse, second in motion.
Oh, okay, thank you. So my concern in adopting that motion is, you know, we've asked a number of questions. You know, I'm looking for more information before I move forward with directing staff to, you know, because the motion is direct staff to bring the CCA formation forward at the next available meeting. I think we have time to get an update on the additional information that we've requested. And then we can still move to the next step once we have the information. If we don't insist on getting the information first, we're less likely to ever get it.
So before I go to Supervisor Brown, I have a question for that. It seems to me that the information we've requested could be placed on as a separate informational item on the agenda prior to this item. And if we're unsatisfied with the update that we received, the answers received, we could table the action item to a later meeting. But it would not, it would not require us to take action at a further later meeting.
Oh, I know. It just puts the train further down the tracks. But Supervisor Brown has been patiently waiting.
Okay. Supervisor Brown?
I just wanted to question Supervisor McCowen. You mean, the questions you asked. You would like information to come back. And I do believe in the interim that Supervisor Jurdie has made a great suggestion. And just a response to Supervisor Woodhouse, when Marin first started up, there were a lot of people that didn't know what was going on. But they soon came up to speed and educated on it. And I think there were some opt-outs. I don't know, Jeff, you may have a better idea about that. But there are some people who never pay attention until it's on their plate. And I think it's in the best interest of the county to move forward. We've been playing around with this for quite some time. I was good friends with Supervisor Susan Adams and heard Marin's woes for their startup and what have you. And then also with our colleagues in Sonoma County, and the times I'm with them, you just always ask the questions. But I do feel we've been discussing this for a year and a half, two years now, that we need to, and I don't have any problem with what Supervisor McCowen, his questions. But I think Supervisor Jurdie has presented a great solution. I want to move forward.
Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to go back one item, the JPA revision that is under discussion. And when are you anticipating that will actually occur?
I expect in September. We're out giving presentations to the cities in July on that. The cities have asked for it. And so I expect that'll be, we may be able to get a vote in August, but it may also go to September.
And it's, I would assume it's likely at that time that the representation of the current participants could change, so that maybe not every Sonoma County city would be represented? Or would you be expanding the board?
I think that's unlikely. I think what's on the table is to expand the board to accommodate Mendocino, rather than to cap the number of board members.
Right. So anyway, I, you know, I'm happy to go along with this, provided, well, let me ask, does it seem realistic that before CCA formation would come back, we would be able to have some degree of clarity on the ability of entities in Mendocino County to have some degree of autonomy over how program funds are spent?
Yes.
Possible partnership with NCPA, or at least have discussions with City of Ukiah and/or NCPA on what the possibilities are. So we have a little more information on that. And is it realistic to think we would know something about Mendocino County representation as to whether it could include a city representative as well as county? And particularly, if all the cities in Sonoma County are each going to have one vote, then the participating cities in Mendocino collectively should have one vote. Seems reasonable.
Okay, Supervisor Woodhouse?
Thank you. I just want to make sure my questions are addressed. And it's more that the board has an opportunity to discuss it of why are we doing this and what is our intention? Are we doing it to give options for cleaner environment? Or are we going to spend the money on electrical, solar projects, or try to divert it to other things? And the board needs to be real clear. If we don't start out clear with the public, then we won't know what to tell them later. So it's maybe an uncomfortable conversation. We have big needs in other areas. But that's an important thing to tell the people what we're going to spend the money on right up front. So I'd like to, when our missing supervisor is here this next time, get clear on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Supervisor McCowen?
Well, I think that's one that we're not in a position to know, because we don't currently know if it's possible to use a portion of the program income to pave roads. Frankly, I kind of think a majority of our residents would think that might be a viable option. You know, they can save a nickel on their- You know, they can save a nickel on their, an additional nickel on their bill, where they can drive on a better road, which affects everybody. So every ratepayer that saves money through this program would also benefit if some portion could be used for roads. But whether that can happen isn't something that can be determined right now based on the pending legal questions and also the ultimate arrangement that we're able to negotiate with Sonoma Clean Power. You know, I frankly, from my standpoint, I would love to see a clause in any agreement that is negotiated that if it is determined that program income can be used for projects that are not clearly energy-related, that Mendocino County entities would have the option to pursue that once that question is settled.
Supervisor Woodhouse?
Last time, I'm sure, thank you, Mr. Chair, that Supervisor McCowen is correct, but I, whether or not someone decides something one way or another outside of this chamber doesn't matter. I think it's us determining what our vision is regardless of what they might decide, and then it would be sued and go the other way. We can still be clear of, do we want every penny of this to go to certain types of things, or are we open so we can have that conversation? I think it's a core issue, and I'd like to hear the other supervisor that's missing on this. But I understand what you're saying, I just think delaying that decision, we can have a good, rich conversation, because I can see where you're headed with it, and you'll see where I'm headed with it better, I think.
And I think that would be an appropriate item for an agenda, and when all five supervisors are here to weigh in on it.
Okay. So I think we have a motion on the table, and I want to clarify, though, that if it passes, that it'll be the direction of the board, that we'll have a separate agenda item prior, earlier on the agenda, which to get answers to the questions that have been raised today.
And those questions are specifically, Chair, if I may, specifically for options for local program income and the use of that program income at a local level, correct?
That's certainly one of them. I believe Mr. Seifert has-
And governance.
City representation.
If there's an answer at that point from the Sonoma Clean Power Board.
And cooperation with NCPA.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion on the table, vote by the button.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much, Hassan's. We're now going to go back to, we had, we have people waiting in the hallway for, to get back to our mental health issues that were on the agenda. And thank you for coming up here, and I guess you have a group to present to this afternoon. So I believe where we left off, mental health, we're on item, I believe we're on item 5E, which is discussion and possible approval of agreement with Redwood Quality Management. So give a moment for the room to clear out. And then following 5E, we also have 5F, 5G, and 5H. And I.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I might suggest, although they're separate contracts for Adult and Children Services, whatever presentation and questions we have, I think might be very similar for both 5D and 5E, maybe we could take them together?
5E and F?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So if you could, if you can consolidate the presentation, and we'll just consolidate the discussion on both.
All right, so we have for you the contracts for Specialty Mental Health Services for next fiscal year, 16, 17, with Redwood Quality Management Company. We have spent a lot of time reviewing these, reviewing the recommendations from Lee Kemper, and we've also spent several phone calls and emails going back and forth with Mr. Kemper on things that we want to discuss with him and getting feedback from him. I think we've at least had him review these four times, maybe even more. So we've spent a lot of time with Mr. Kemper on getting these, and the staff has spent a lot of times on adding what we hope is what we were hoping to get out of the contract, and adding a lot more really compliance to our contracts and oversight and requirements for both the county and the contractor themselves. I did want to point out that there, I know there's a little bit of a question regarding the adult contract, that the dollar amount is a little bit lower, and I think it's important to point out that that is correct, but part of that, the main reason that that is lower is that, as you know, services came back into the county, so a portion of that dollar amount had to come back into a county to cover those access services, medication support services, and LPS placements, which is 24 care costs. So that, those dollars came back into the county to cover those services. So there is, that is a reason why you'll see the contract is a little bit lower than it was last year, because the dollars came back into the county for those services. There are some, just on a really quick side note, is there are some additional contracts that we are doing for the transition that are under the $50,000 limit, so you guys may not see all, you won't see all of those contracts. I just want to let people know there are additional contracts that are a part of this transition, and there are some contracts that we put through at the $50,000 limit that will be coming for amendments in the near future as we needed to get emergency stuff in place to get through this transition as we move forward. You guys had any questions on these two contracts?
Supervisor- So on the issue of services that are being brought back in-house to the county, like the medication, is that service also going to be available for children or clients under age 24 and under? Or I'm trying to understand why it sounds like the money's being taken from the adult side, if it's available for both?
So it's not, so the county will be doing medication support services for 25 and above, and Redwood Quality Management Company will be working with their subcontractors to do medication support services for 24 and under.
And I'm sure this would be a simple question for anyone who has served on the mental health board, but since I'm not one of those people, why are there two different places that people go for medication if they're over 25 versus under 25? Maybe that's an obvious, there's an obvious answer to that?
That's the way it's been separated out. As you know, when we contracted out, the adults went through the adult system, the children went through the children's system. The last couple of years, children were getting their psychiatric needs through the clinic, specifically Hillside Clinic, and Dr. Timmy, who was doing those services, has left the clinic and contracted with RQMC, so they're adding a med service piece that they didn't exactly have. So that's kind of that piece. We've are sort of, we kind of left it the way it is, waiting for the RFP for next year. We didn't want to combine everything in and then decide that as we do an RFP, the adult services contracts out. We never contracted it out to have one provider just do med services. We contracted it out by age range. So that would be why the med services were segregated in those age ranges, because of the way the contracts were written originally. When we brought stuff back in, it was decided for this year to go ahead, have the county do them for the year, and see what happens with the RFP next year.
Okay. So just, again, it might be an obvious answer to this, maybe parents with children or adult children would have strong opinions that it should be separated out, I don't know, but it just seems, given that we have some small population centers, and we've had questions raised by members of the public about the inadequacy of the availability of the medication service, certainly on the coast, and being so infrequent, and I'm just wondering, would we get some economy of scale if we just had one place, and it's open more days, more often, because it's, we're not bifurcating the surface? But again, maybe people want it separated out, I don't know. Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I really want to compliment staff for these contracts. I, you know, my review of them, I believe they incorporate every recommendation made by Kemper Consulting. The really, to me, some of the really key ones, what I think he called the universal compliance clause, so that ultimately, if there's a question, the county is able to direct, this is how we will do it. The requirement for a system design structure report to be provided to the county, to the approval of the county. So really, I think you've done a fantastic job in working with the contractor to, and Kemper Consulting to pull these together. The only thing that I would like to add would be a little bit additional clarification on the communication plan, which our previous contracts called for, but one was never developed. And the communication plan is on page 40 of the adult contract, page 42 of the children's, and I've asked our clerk to distribute some potential language to be included. Frankly, I'm confident that our contractor is able to respond effectively to public questions that come up and ought to be encouraged to do so. Again, not changing the concept that they are not speaking on behalf of the county, but they should certainly be able to speak on behalf of the services they deliver and questions about those services, public comments that may come up in the media. So, you know, I would appreciate it if the board would entertain adding language to the effect that I've provided, and of course, I'd like to hear from both staff and our contractor regarding what they may think about that.
Okay, Supervisor Brown?
I agree with you Supervisor McCowen, and we need to move this forward. Maybe we can go directly to those you're asking the question of, and then get back with a motion.
Certainly.
Okay. Maybe Camille Schrader from Road Quality Management, Road Children's Services, might be able to come up, and I don't know if you have a copy of this?
So the language seems fine to me.
Okay.
I appreciate the opportunity to be, you know, spontaneous and authentic in my responses to people who ask questions, both personally as well as in the media or otherwise, so I appreciate your willingness to allow us to do that, but of course, I would certainly talk with the county about those kinds of conversations, so it's helpful.
Thanks.
So I did make a couple of typos in here, but I'll correct those. You know, I'd be happy to make a motion, and is it acceptable to make the motion to approve both of the contracts in one motion?
Supervisor McCowen, could I just follow up with Supervisor Jurdie's question around med management?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is that all right? So from our perspective, we took the transition swiftly and from the adult service system. RQMC felt very confident in our ability to manage the intensity and the supportive outpatient, general outpatient services, and did not feel the confidence that we could do med management. It felt we had not done any med management at all previous to what we're doing this year with Dr. Timmy and a nurse through, that we have to do because she left the clinic. All of the Children and Youth Systems med management happened through the clinic. So frankly, it was intimidating to us. So the county willingly took in med management, at least in the short run, and we did not want to adjust the Children and Youth System of Med Management until whether it goes to RFP or not, because certainly I'd like to support my system fully. If this is the system I'm going to be running, is just children and youth, then we didn't want to rock any boat until we know what's happening next year in the future on the adult side. My hunch is that there'll be all kinds of changes to even children and youth and adults if we continue this kind of an arrangement moving forward. So that was why.
I guess just my general thoughts, and I think I said this at a previous meeting, was that perhaps the best scenario for medication would be just through the clinics, because they're already working with children, they're working with adults.
I just wanted to add, as the Health and Human Services Agency Director, Chair Majerdy, that we definitely will be analyzing this through the transition as we go out to bid this year for the request for proposals. I think it's a really important question, and really the distinctions that there are for individuals who have a unique psychiatric and medical needs, for the serious and persistently pervasively mentally ill in our adult population is so different than the children's needs, and we're working closely with the clinics. I think the meetings that have happened, that Janine's team and Camille with RQMC have been doing with the clinic system to really explore what are the right roles and responsibilities across the system that we'll be bringing to you those recommendations as a result of these meetings, and as we go through the transition in the next few months, to really address medical management and access to care.
Okay, thanks. Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will make the recommended motion for both item E for the adult services and item F for children's services, amending the communication plan to add the following language to the first paragraph, but is encouraged to describe the services it provides and respond to questions about those services, period. Contractor is also encouraged, where appropriate, to provide a timely and factual response to public concerns.
Second.
Okay, Supervisor Woodhouse?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know we are pushing to approve this quickly. I've worked on the match available money and what's budgeted and the guessing about a deficit, and it's very, very tight, and I'm just wondering, is there something here in the contract that protects us from money being needed from the general fund to meet these services? Where's that line drawn? I was told a year ago or so that would not be the case, but I feel like we're getting closer to having used up other monies, and so when you're out of money, that is where we'd end up, but I'd like to hear if I'm incorrect, or any comment you can make.
Tammy Moss Chandler, again, I'll defer to Alan for any comments he wants to add around the general fund, but what I can assure you is that we're working very closely with RQMC around how to even better leverage federal dollars. And so we're anticipating actually that we'll be looking over this next quarter at ways that we may be able to leverage additional federal dollars into the system. We'll be really analyzing our other dollars, and I think we have a lot of areas to explore there before. We will be looking at mandated services that needed to encroach on other funding sources.
That's what I've hoped as well, that we would really get clear presentations of how we could access other dollars that I don't think we are drawing down, but we're going to need to, so I'm looking forward to getting that information.
Okay, we've got a motion on the table. Go ahead, Karen Castle.
Sorry, I would just make sure that we clarify, notice that the same contract language, communication language is in both contracts.
Correct.
So I just want to clarify that that motion was as to both contracts.
Correct.
Okay.
Regarding the fiscal FFP and the rate on the general fund, as far as I know, I feel like, one, we're in an exploratory phase here. As I've said numerous times, the adult population is a new expanded population through the ACA, so we will, all of the services that are provided have, for this certain percentage of the population, 100% federal match, which gets to reinvest in the system. So if we can see what we have, then we'll have a sense of how the system can feed itself in terms of providing expanded services. I do want to leave a caveat, however, that we are doing SB 82, the Crisis Residential, that's been a mandate on the table, we are certainly going to do it. It looks to us like we probably can manage it in the current structure, which will be wonderful, and, but it's all based on what percentage of this is federal FFP at the 100% and the 95. And to the degree that we can do that mathematical order and draw in some transition age pieces on the youth side, I think we'll be okay, but that's the only question out there that we're not absolutely positive about, which is the Crisis Residential piece.
And there is a question about what services and how many clients we have been dealing with, that's my concern. So we're saying, yes, we can do this, it's tight, but we don't even know that.
I'm not sure it's tight. We'll see.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
So we've had members of the public sticking with us right up to the noon hour. Does anyone want to comment on this before we vote on it? Okay, not seeing any, vote by the button.
Motion carries unanimously.
And we still have three more smaller contracts, if you wanted to go right into that.
So the next contract is a four-month contract with Ortner Management Group. So, the next contract is a four-month contract with Ortner Management Group. This contract, we put together as a pay-per-performance, and it is going to allow Ortner to close out the business that he's been doing for the county and allow the county to receive the needed documents we need for any future audits or reviews that could happen in the next, you know, year to five years. So, that is that contract that's right in front of you, and I'm happy, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe we've reviewed this previously, and I'll move approval of the recommended action.
Second.
Okay. Supervisor Woodhouse? All right. Okay. Any public comment on this contract?
Hello. I'm Nancy Sutherland, Behavioral Health Advisory Board. And it's not, my question isn't directly about this contract, but it's sort of in the range, and it has to do with the audit that the department did, the chart audit. And I wanted to raise the question of how, as completing that audit, what were the disallowances for billing that from the, do you understand? Do you understand what I'm getting at? The disallowances that the county found?
In the most recent audit?
In the chart audit they did as part of this transition. So, they audited Ortner's chart, and I'm interested as, for the Behavioral Health Advisory Board, of what were the results of that audit, especially for disallowed clients.
Okay. So, I'd like to redirect the question to the staff.
Thank you, Chairman Jerrity. So, we actually are still in the process of finalizing those amounts, so we'll certainly have it for the next Behavioral Health Board Advisory Meeting, as well as at your next board meeting. But we have reviewed charts with our staff. We've done fiscal review, which is actually quite typical in fiscal payment systems, as we're finalizing the review of what is allowable to pull down for federal financial participation. So, we don't have those final numbers yet, and I'd hate to throw out some anticipated what-ifs, but we will have them by your next meeting.
Okay. Okay. And how far through the audit, just percentage-wise, are you?
Well, I'll have to defer to Janine, the specific, I know it's quite, it's quite comprehensive.
Okay. All right. So, but thanks for the question, and you'll be hearing more at the Behavioral Health Board meeting.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments on this contract? Okay. Not seeing any. We have a motion. Vote by the button.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Then we're on to five H, which is two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-dollar contract with Davis Guest House Home.
Right. This contract, Davis Guest Home, is a boarding care facility that we have used for many years. It is a placement for those who are LPS conserved. It's a really great, it's one of the better that we really enjoy working with. So, we're really, so that's the contract that's in front of you. I'm happy to answer any questions you have regarding this contract, but it is a contract to allow to pay the daily patch rate we are required to pay for any LPS client that we place in a boarding care.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So, move.
I'll second.
Okay. Any comment on the motion? Any public comment on the contract? Seeing some heads shake, no. Okay. So, vote by the button.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. And the final contract with Willow Glen Care Center in the amount of four-hundred-thousand dollars.
Willow Glen Care System is a lot like Davis Guest Home. It's a center with different levels of boarding care, and so we also use them for our LPS conserved clients. It's a boarding care, and it allows them to move throughout their system of care.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, we are in a position where we do need to provide these services. There are currently no facilities in the county. Whether that'll change in the future, I think, remains to be seen. It's, so I will move approval of the recommended action.
Second.
Any public comment on this contract? Okay. Not seeing any. Okay. Vote by the button.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Thank you both for, and thank you for the questions, which there'll be more answers forthcoming. We next have, I want to turn to the County Council for, we have on our agenda closed session, which I think we were anticipating originally getting to before lunch, so will we be going to this after lunch or during lunch?
We do have a one-thirty.
I'm going to have to defer to the board. We do have Mike Sweeney present. Well, he stepped out, but he's close by, but he's here for that, and we have, we have two matters on.
Okay. Would the board like to have lunch first, or go into working lunch? Supervisor Brown?
Mr. Chair, I don't think a five-minute, seven-minute break is acceptable. We've gone through several hours of meetings. I think that we should wait.
Do me a favor. Okay.
Or we could very quickly take a break and then go into closed session, but as long as we're out by twelve-thirty, I think it's only proper that the board, along with staff, get a decent break in between morning and afternoon meetings.
So, is, you're suggesting that we might have a lunch break and, but still go into closed session before we come back and open session at one-thirty?
Well, I can do either.
Yeah.
I just, I just don't think it's fair when we go without any break throughout the day.
I got it. Okay.
Yep. So, one way to do it would be take a lunch break and reconvene in closed session at, say, twelve-forty-five or twelve-thirty?
Or one. Whatever works.
Twelve-forty. Let's eat lunch and come back to closed session at twelve-forty-five. Does that, does staff feel that would provide adequate time?
And we would be returning to, open session at one-thirty?
Yeah.
That should work if we get there at twelve-forty-five.
Okay. So, we'll, we'll take a break, but we'll reconvene in closed session at twelve-forty-five. And do you want to just summarize the closed session items that we'll be discussing in closed session?
So, we have, we have three matters on closed session. The conference with labor negotiator, I believe, is not on the session today, so that's off. So, we have a conference with legal counsel with regard to existing litigation, two cases. One is Mendocino County Black-tailed Deer Association et al. versus the County of Mendocino et al. And the other matter is County of Mendocino versus Solid Waste Systems.
Okay. So, those are the two items that we'll be discussing in closed session at twelve-forty-five, and we'll be back in open session at one-thirty.
Correct.
So, you said twelve-forty-five, we go to closed session. Okay.
All right. Thanks. Okay. At one-thirty-two, we'll resume the Mendocino County Board Supervisors in order, and we had a closed session during lunch and addressed two issues. I'd like to call on the County Council to report out of our closed session.
Okay. So, in terms of reporting out of closed session, on item number C, the County of Mendocino versus Solid Waste Systems, direction was given to staff. With regard to item number B, the existing litigation, Mendocino County Black-tailed Deer Association versus County of Mendocino, it was, it was agreed that we could, there was a settlement agreement reached with the petitioners, and that is that we would continue to keep our ordinance nine-point-three-one in place. In exchange for them dismissing the lawsuit, we would agree to stop accepting applications for permits for the ninety-nine plants after tomorrow, so at five tomorrow, we would stop accepting applications. To be clear, the understanding is that the applications that have been given to the sheriff's office will be processed in accordance with the ordinance.
And just to reiterate that, people can continue to apply today and tomorrow, up until five o'clock tomorrow.
That's correct.
Okay.
And so, and then it was, it was voted upon and direction was given to sign that stipulation.
Okay. Thank you. That's the report out of closed session. And the next thing on our agenda is informational update on the status of the town plan, local coastal plan amendment for the town, you know, Andy Guffson, Plank Department.
Thank you. Last week, staff met with Coastal Commission staff and began to identify and work through the concerns or potential edits that the commissions identified. We are returning to meet with the staff. I don't have the precise date, but it's earlier, sometime next week or the week following. We are on target for October, November timeframe for the commission to consider the matter. We're working out a schedule so that we can conclude our work on the update with the staff and bring it back to the board for the August sixteenth hearing. We would want to present to the board the list of friendly mods that would be recommended so that this board can act on those and accept those. I want to also schedule an ad hoc meeting with Supervisors Brown and Hamburg next week, if they're available. I'll reach out separately on that matter to go into more details about the type of discussions we've had with Coastal Commission staff on the modifications.
For clarification, so you said it would be coming back to the Board of Supervisors for friendly amendments, which meeting in August, August sixteenth or the second?
I think that's one of the meeting dates, yes. We would schedule permitting, but that would be the latest time that we could get this board's input and then allow for staff to prepare for the hearing in October, November.
Okay. So, then for, back to that Coastal Commission, Commission itself, for October or November?
Right.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments about the update?
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Oh, County Council?
Sorry. I did state, just a further report out of closed session, I did state that a vote was taken, but I didn't state what that vote was, and that was a unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we have timed in for one-forty-five, and we have about seven minutes or so, so maybe we could go to, do we want to just accept the Department Transportation Director's report? I don't know if he's planning on being here today.
Not that I'm aware of.
So, he's not here to ask questions. We are all talking to Howard every week, anyway. Does someone want to make a motion to accept the Department Transportation Director's report?
Direction of the chair.
Yes.
Okay. We'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Vote by the button then.
Motion carries unanimously.
Maybe the legislative update, we could probably do pretty quickly.
Yes, I believe Sarah has one item, so we'll just try and get her to come in.
Six B? Okay. Sure. So, six B, which is discussion of possible action regarding board supervisors ad hoc and standing committees. You all have the report. There's a number of ad hoc committees that really, at this time, could be disbanded, and then there's appointment to, to a couple of standing committees. Anyone want to make any comments, motion? Okay. Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the appointments to the standing committees, the disbandment of the Solid Waste Settlement Committee make perfect sense. I think the other two require a bit of discussion or clarification in terms of the Little River Airport land management. That issue has not been resolved. The recommendation is, there is, if there is a need for future action, that that item be referred to the Public Resources Committee. I think it is an ongoing issue that's unresolved. I think it would be appropriate to refer it to Public Resources now, and that would entail the need for there to be a public report out of where that committee is at this point, but I think that could be done probably at the next board meeting. It could probably be done with a written report from Supervisor Hamburg and staff as to where we are on that issue, and then at that point, further action could go to Public Resources. Again, the issue's been unresolved, so I don't see that we would just drop the issue.
Okay.
And then I do have further comments on the issue of the tax sharing ad hoc.
Okay. Well, do we, want to just go right into that text here?
Well, again, it's an unresolved issue. It's an issue that is critical to the future relationship of the city of Ukiah, the County of Mendocino. Potentially, it has implications down the line for some of the other cities in the county, so I don't think it would be appropriate to simply disband that committee. It is one that it would be appropriate for it to continue as an ad hoc so that the two members have the opportunity to meet with staff outside of a totally public arena, because there are some, you know, policy issues that are best hashed out internally, just as the city is doing with their ad hoc. If it came down to it and no one else is willing to serve, and it, and then also, again, there would need to be a full public report out prior to appointing a new member, I'm perfectly in favor of doing that. I think any supervisor could serve, certainly Supervisor Brown, whose interests are maybe most directly affected. But if, if the board determined to continue that and no one else was willing, as a last resort, I would be willing to be reappointed. But my main point is, I don't think it's appropriate to simply disband that committee.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Chairman Jerrity, and I do agree with Supervisor McCowen. I did receive a couple of phone calls from individuals, constituents, that were very concerned in abandoning this particular ad hoc, and I feel that new appointments could be made, and I want to serve.
Okay. Hear that. And so, what I'm hearing is a request for two of the ad hocs to have a report from the existing member and then maybe make appointments. Is the preference to make appointments to those ad hocs at today's meeting, or just put it on our next available agenda? I mean, we could, we could just cleanly just disband the committees today, and then our next meeting reconvene them with the new composition.
Well, we could actually, I think we could do both today with direction that prior to Public Resources or the tax sharing ad hoc reconvening, there would be a public report out.
Okay.
So, if that's acceptable to everyone, I'm ready to make that motion.
It's acceptable to me.
So, I would move that we confirm the appointments to the standing committees, that we disband the Solid Waste Systems Incorporated litigation negotiation ad hoc, that we refer issues related to the Little River Airport land management to the Public Resources Board Standing Committee, and that we appoint Supervisor Brown to the Tax Sharing Ad hoc Committee with further direction that staff arrange for public reports out on the previous work of the Little River Airport ad hoc and the tax sharing ad hoc.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. Any public comment on the motion? Okay. Not seeing any. We'll vote by the button.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. So, it, Alan?
It is one-forty-five now, but I believe Sarah's here with a brief update, if you wanted to.
Okay. Okay, if we could just get that quickly.
Good afternoon. We had a request from CSAC to move forward with an opposition letter for AB 2877. It's wireless small cells permitting. And the bill would preempt local authority by requiring antennas to be permitted in all zones without public input and eliminating consideration by counties and cities on aesthetic or environment, environmental impacts of small cells. In addition, it would require cities and counties to lease or license publicly owned facilities for the installation of such facilities and impose a 60-day time limit for the issuance of all permits related to this item. CSAC and RCRC are concerned that this preempts local control. I've reached out to Planning and Building as well as Trish from Broadband Alliance, and all of them are too concerned about the local control issue, and there's no direct red flags or opposition of why we shouldn't move forward. So I'm requesting just some feedback to you if we'd like to move forward. We'd have to get them a letter to the Finance Committee by the end of day tomorrow so we can be included in the analysis for the committee hearing on June 29th.
Supervisor Brown?
And for those that haven't read about this legislation, it basically is taking away public review. And authority from local government as to the siding of such units, even the public hearing process. And I think we, at least I heard loud and clear from my constituents, they want public review processes and a process where they can come and address whatever projects may be occurring or applied for. But this would take authority away from local government in order to have that happen.
So, I, without seeing any other direction, I think direction of the board was that we're happy to send a letter. I think we should also maybe comment, we want public comment, however, the county at the same time is actually moving ahead with its own proposals to kind of streamline the process for, for cell towers, kind of clarify the rules, basically.
If this bill passes, what we're doing is moot.
Yeah, but I mean, I think it would be important for us to note that in our comment letter.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, it's 1:45, and we're going to go to our notice public hearing, discussion of possible adoption of resolution to allocate on hand community development block grant funds. I want to turn to the clerk, and have we established proper notice?
Yes, proper notice has been established and all correspondence has been distributed regarding this item.
And so at 1:47, we'll open the public hearing. And I guess, do we want to, do we want to note what correspondence we received? Oh, yeah, okay. Two things at once, Sarah. Okay, and we'll go right into staff presentation from John Moore and Steve Duncliff.
Good afternoon, Supervisor. Steve Duncliff, Director, Planning and Building Services, and I'll introduce this item. Just introduce John Moore as the gentleman that'll be carrying this item, and I'll get it off your way.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, board members, good afternoon. My name is John Moore, and I'm with Planning and Building Services. Before you today is a request to allocate approximately $120,000 of annual community development block grant program income generated from business loan amortized payments. Currently, the county has three loans that are making monthly payments. They were 20-year loans issued in 2010, so they should be fully, the money should be available, the funding should be available all the way through August of 2030. The, the future availability of this funding is subject to the continued loan payments. Today, there are several options available to your board. Your board may allocate one year of program income, which is approximately $120,000, and do this each year. Your board may allocate multiple years of program income, or your board may allocate the program income to a revolving loan fund, housing or business assistance, and kind of be done with it. If you were to do that, that funding would go into that loan fund as it is received. As the state requires, staff conducted a public outreach effort to obtain input from the community on the use of available community development block grant program funding. A public meeting was held on May 5th. We received seven project proposals that are listed here. We received a proposal from West Company to continue the operation or the provision of micro business enterprise, micro enterprise business technical assistance program. We received three proposals from RCHDC. The first one is to provide an annual multi-year request to assist 16 of their 32 units at the Dwayne Hill Terrace Project. We also received a land acquisition project proposal from RCHDC for $120,000. This is a multi-year request for a future 40-unit, single-room occupancy housing project. And a third project proposal we received from them is $200,000 to fund five low-income homeowners, down payment assistance in the Lakewood subdivision. We received one proposal from Ford Street Project, and that is to provide three years of assistance to provide $910 per month in rent subsidy for four units. We received a proposal from Mendocino Coast Hospitality Center to fund one year of a case manager salary. Planning and Building submitted a request to hire a consultant to prepare a housing and community development plan. In, in the past, your board has expressed an interest in using CDBG for road improvements, so a road improvement project is included in this list. And finally, because it is an option, staff included the establishment of a revolving loan fund as a listed project. The next steps in the process after your board prioritizes a project list are, staff will prepare a supplemental request to the Housing and Community Development Department at the state. HCD will review and approve the request and prepare a contract amendment. Staff will complete the required environmental review and other administrative actions to implement the project. If your board approves the revolving loan fund project, staff will amend our program income reuse plan. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I believe most of the project proponents are also here in the audience.
So, maybe if the board doesn't object, maybe we could hear directly from the applicants first and then, then ask questions? Okay. So, why don't we just go down the list? Start with West Company.
Good afternoon, Dan Jordy and the Board of Supervisors. I'm Pamela Patterson from West Company, but I'm also the President of CAMIA, which is California Association of Micro Enterprise Opportunity. So I wanted to just tell you a little bit about micro enterprise. First of all, I want to thank you for your ongoing support of micro enterprise technical assistance for our businesses and our home. As you may be aware, micro businesses account for 90% of businesses in a rural county, just like our county. This type of business with five or fewer employees, including the owner, is the fastest growing type of business and creates 25% of net new jobs. Oftentimes, these are first-time business owners that are searching for a better way to understand how to start their business by attending trainings and business, working with business advisors, advisors to zero in on their requests for assistance. Micro enterprise development organizations, which there are 85 in the state of California and 696 in the United States, provide comprehensive services to help entrepreneurs start and grow micro businesses. These services include business planning, management, training, market search, research, networking, business incubation, loan packaging, as well as financing for micro loans. Mendocino needs micro enterprise development to help raise the level of income that can be earned here. Many aspiring entrepreneurs seek out services because they have a skill or knowledge they can sell on their own time to create additional income. Although Mendocino receives high marks for a low unemployment rate, low wages leave families scrambling for opportunities. And this is why we are here today, to ask you to provide continuous support for the CDBG program for your fellow citizens. Recently, I attended CAMIA's annual meeting where we discussed the changing new economy. A couple statistics to consider. 60% of people earn less than $15 an hour. By 2030, half of all the jobs we know will no longer exist. 32% of workers are not engaged and feel they are not using their time well or their creativity. This is a prescription for entrepreneurship. As we see in our communities, more people working three or more jobs, we are finding ways to create talent, engage in collaborative designs, leading career collages, which include micro business as part of that collage. Micro businesses and micro enterprise technical assistance is at the hub of transforming our communities and bringing equity to the place we call home.
So, I have a couple of questions. And kind of what I have in my mind when I think of West Company is I think of your group working with people who want to start a relatively small business, basically self-employed. Sometimes those businesses are retail stores, others not. And I guess, and then, and then I look at the other types of programs, they will often seek these funds, and they have to do with housing often. And I'm wondering if there's a way of bringing the two together, and this is what I'm thinking. Many people that own property have supplemented their income by renting, a rental unit on their property. And, and yet, that's not like a skill you just learn, or you, I mean, there's not like a class you normally would go to, like, well, how do you create a rental unit? And how do you budget for, how do you get the financing to make the renovation? And I'm wondering if that's something that West Company could, or if maybe you've already done this, but if somebody could develop as a training for people to, like, how, how would you budget for creating a rental, making the renovations? Who would you go to to get financing? You know, who's out there available locally to get financing? I don't know, Savings Bank? My understanding is credit union, mental like credit unions talked about going into mortgages, but hasn't yet. So anyway, this is just a thought I had.
That's a good thought. Generally, it's not considered a business. It's considered an investment of property. So if we were to go to SBA and ask for financing for a real estate operation, that would be creating rentals, it would not be something that they have any financing available, a small business administration. So it's an interesting space that it's not really under our preview, but this particular money is something that 51% can be spent on non-low income individuals, as long as there's, I mean, just the opposite. You know, so I guess there could be the potential for that.
So, your traditional funding source would not cover that kind of a class?
Not at all.
But this particular funding source could?
Yeah, it would be pushing us into another place. I'm not sure.
This is what I, I mean, I routinely run across oftentimes seniors who own a piece of property, but they don't have, they're on fixed income, don't have a lot of income, and some of them do rent to people, and others have, I think, thought about it, but they're not really sure what, where to go. Where do you hire a good contractor that's not going to rip them off and all that, you know, so.
Yeah, that's, I happen to have one rental property. I know what it's like to do this work. I'd have to give that some more serious consideration.
All right. Supervisor, what else?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to be clear with the board, we don't all discuss these things. Occasionally, we'll discuss parts of it, but I had been working with Supervisor Hamburg in our support for West Company. It's something we both feel strongly about, and I'm not comfortable that he's not here to be able to advocate for whichever one of these things. I can't speak for him, but I know that he's very supportive of you, and we've talked about finding how to keep the money coming to you. So I'm committed to that, and I just want to let the board know my concern. I think all of them are worthy things, and I could support them all, but we don't have that much money. But I wanted to talk about that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, rural community housing.
Good afternoon. My name is Suzie Vaughn. As the Women's Business Center Director, I have seen hundreds of women come to our office for different business orientation needs. Generally, our clients don't have previous experience managing a business and aren't very familiar with business concepts and therefore need more help on developing a feasible business plan. So when they come to West Company, we help them understand what it takes to open not only a business, but a successful business. And that's where we really emphasize the feasibility of the business plan and helping them with market research and attaining, or setting attainable goals. In the sense, we, the value that we deliver is twofold. One, we help them find out all the information that they need in order to make the decision that is best for them, and two, preventing people from jumping into something that would lead them to a greater financial distress. So this is something we're able to do throughout the life of a business, whether it's still in the business idea phase or whether someone's thinking of expanding a business, because we also do help existing businesses. So this wide range of technical assistance that we offer truly is a very sustainable economic development resource in our community. And in this way, the Women's Business Center is helping level the playing field for women in business throughout our county. In 2014, the median earnings were significantly less for women, with that being 20,000 in 2014 compared to 26,000 for men. Women start their businesses with half as much capital as men do, and women are also employed in jobs with hourly wages that are two-thirds less than the overall median hourly wage in each of the state's counties. Access to capital rate for women is 5.5 compared to men's at 11.4%. And furthermore, reports indicate that two of the biggest barriers faced by women in business is lack of mentorship and lack of access to capital. Our services are aimed at addressing just that, and in this way, we're making Mendocino County a more equitable and better place to live.
Any questions? Thank you. So, rural community housing? Oh, you have a couple more speakers? No one gave me a note. Go ahead. Do you guys want all just coming up at once?
My name is Jennifer Lucky, and my business is Imaginative Custom Creations, and I will be doing sublimation, vinyl printing, heat pressing, and screen printing. So I will basically be able to put any photo onto any item. And my goal is to be able to hire a few employees in our community. And one of the, the reason why I began this is because I've always had a dream of creating my own product in our community rather than going to Santa Rosa. I know a lot of community members that travel to Santa Rosa for their sports gear, their school gear, or their business gear, work shirts. And it just takes a lot of travel and money in order to go out of our community to seek it out somewhere else. I would like to have the opportunity to provide it in our own community. And with the help of West Company, I've actually been able to pursue my dream, because without them, I didn't know exactly what steps to take in order to get a business license or permit. And I am now in the middle of purchasing my equipment, and within weeks, we'll be ready to start selling to our community members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Lamb, and I'm a consulting advisor for West Company. And with me is Maria Martenson of Testa Vineyards. One of the type of clients we receive are people that are already in business, and they're trying to get to that next level, or they're running into a wall, or in Maria's case, she wanted to expand her hours and hire some more people to give her a hand. And how's that been going for you?
Yeah. I also wanted to say, I, I went to West before Testa even came, you know, to a winery, and I got some education class and didn't know we were going to do the winery. So it's been important to, to us. I, they helped me along the way, so I'm here in support of them and hoping they get to continue helping other people. And they, we do have a rental on our property, and they did help us with the plan for that too, so, thank you.
Well, thank you for creating some housing.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Audrey Jade. I'm a chiropractor, and West Company helped me start my business. I moved here, back here, I was born and raised here, and then left when I was 17 and traveled the world, and went to college, and came back 15 years later with my chiropractic license, but also pregnant with my second child and without a father. So I had my hands full and was really overwhelmed. And West Company helped me get on my feet, got me financing, got a plan in order. So actually, in July will be my year anniversary having my office open downtown Ukiah. It's, I specialize in pregnancy and pediatrics, and I work with Bloom, which is a new birthing center in town. They refer a lot of their patients to me, and so it's a great asset to the community. Before I was open, there was no chiropractors in the county that specialized in pregnancy. A lot of chiropractors actually turned away pregnant women. So it's providing lots of services to families, natural health care, it's keeping them healthier, safer, easier births, healthier people, less.
It's keeping them healthier, safer, easier births, healthier people, less pain medications. And now, at my year anniversary, I'm ready to, I'm in the thinking process of expanding and hiring a receptionist. So far, it's just been me, but I'm ready to, I've been really successful and I'm ready to get a bigger space and get more people on board, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Savaja and I'm the owner-operator of Truck Stop Barbershop, right here at the truck stop. Now, coming to July, I have been in business for a year. And prior to this, I've just worked jobs, living paycheck to paycheck. And I wanted to get out and try something different and do something for my family and, and do a trade. And I chose cutting hair. And it turned in from going just to learn how to do this trade to having an opportunity to run my own business in front of me. And mind you, I had no clue how to go about this, what to do or anything. So I sought the help from West Company and they really helped me out a lot, from everything, going through my business plan to how to properly, you know, do books and profit mastery and marketing and a number of other things. And so to this, to this day, my business has been really picking up. I've never thought I would be able to do something like this. I, it was something that just wasn't in my grasp. But when, once I started this, with the help of West Company, I opened up my, my barber shop. And like most businesses, I started off really slow. You know, one thing that I could say is like I really enjoy giving back to the community because I felt like I had a lot of help from different resources in the community, West Company being one of them. Now, this, about this time last year, we had all the fires out there and we had all the firefighters come in and stay in our local hotels. And I was really slow at my barber shop and I wanted to give back to my community, so I offered them through social media and flyers that I brought to the hotels, they were staying at free services for the firefighters. And it was a really big turnout. I, ever since then, I've been busy, nonstop. And I've continued to grow my business. And I, I can't really say that I would have been able to do it quite as good or even know what to do if it wasn't for the help of West Company. And I just really, I praise them and thank them for, for, you know, showing me in the right direction.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. I'm Heather Gerwitz and I'm here today as a community member and a member of the West Company Board of Directors. And I just want to express my support for micro enterprise funding for them. I was the former Women's Business Center Director for West Company and I have seen firsthand the importance of the services that West Company offers. And every, it was at least once a week, when I was working for West Company, I would find different businesses throughout the county that you wouldn't even know got their start with West Company. And that there's businesses that have been around for 20, 30 years because West Company has helped them. And there's new entrepreneurs every day that come to West Company. And I hope that the Board will continue to support their services. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name's Stephen Omara and this is my 14th year of being associated with West Company as an employee or as an advisor. One of the first businesses I helped bring into business was Oco Time. Some of you might be familiar with that. They have an employment body of about 16 individuals locally. And of course, they've opened up their second operation up in Willets and they have done marvelously well. And it is that employment that keeps them housed. Another business is Slam Dunk Pizza, started by Matt and Stephanie Duncan. And that was a longtime dream and they keep a lot of young people to develop their employment skills, give them the initial training they need in the work world. And they have doubled in size in the last year. Perhaps some of you are familiar with Three Sisters, which is one of the older retail operations in town. West Company helped them get started. Some of you may remember the brewery on State and Perkins. We helped them as well. Lots and lots of businesses have been helped. Many of them have more than one or two employees. Oco Time, Slam Dunk being examples of that. And those folks are the folks that are being able to have the income to pay the rents in our limited housing that we know that we have here. So while I think housing is really important, it's important also to be able to pay that rent. And rent is really the driving thrust of housing these days, particularly among the millennial population. So I'd encourage you to do whatever you think is possible to assist West Company. It's been around for a very long time and has made dramatic improvements in the employability and opportunities within the county. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Jardi and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Paul Garza and I'm the President of the Board of the Directors of West Company. And I much appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, to support West Company's request for $120,000. West Company is requesting these funds to bridge the period of time during which the county will not be able to apply for regular CDBG grant funds. CDBG grant funds provide between 33% and 40% of our annual $430,000 operating budget. These funds are doubly important because we use them to match the federally required, or to provide the federally required match to the Women's Business Center. Without these funds, West Company would not be able to meet that match, those match requirements, thereby jeopardizing that federal funding. West Company employs five full-time in the county and seven contract positions for self-employed advisors. We serve approximately 280 to 320 aspiring entrepreneurs and micro businesses each year. Our cost per participant for these services is a modest $1,500 to $1,700 per year. For this, the county gets very substantial economic impact. On average, we help start 35 new businesses, create 88 jobs and assist clients in assessing more than $1.5 million in capital each year. West Company has proudly played a role in the economic health of our community. For the last 28 years, West Company has mentored the entrepreneurial pipeline of Mendocino County. As your partner in developing business and creating prosperity in the county, we, we provide deeply experienced, compassionate experts to guide entrepreneurs in success, to create a vibrant place for them to live and, and to work. We do this by listening to the needs and aspirations of our clients. We connect our clients to information, knowledge and capital. We create hubs for advising, information through our workshops and training. Most of all, we help our clients start and grow their businesses. We pay attention to the diverse segments of the county and we provide services in every corner of our county. For example, in District One, Mendocino Organics took advantage of our financial management guidance and marketing expertise to improve their first-generation farm business. In District Two, many of you know popular Ukiah restaurants. We've assisted Salsas and Oco Time, where I had lunch today, by the way. We've also worked with Jones English Toffee and Mendocino Wool and Fibers. We recently helped Mendo Sun Market assisting in the development of their financial management systems and hiring their first employees. In District Four, Outdoor Stores got their start with us, as did Toda Zida and Calix. We assisted these women business owners in completing their business plans and financial projections. In District Five, we have worked with Arena Market and Cafe and Frankie's Pizza, which has become a community icon. We've also assisted Boonville Cafe. West Company guided these businesses' business plan process so these businesses could access their startup capital. We take pride in serving the entire county and we also take great pride in generating tax revenue for the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for the West Company presentation? Okay. So then we'll go ahead with rural community housing. Is there someone here for that? Okay. Anyone here for the Ford Street?
Good afternoon. My name's Jaclyn Williams. I'm the Executive Director of Ford Street. I'm here today at, with a request to help with rent subsidies for four transitional housing units. Ford Street provides transitional housing to homeless families. We have 12 units and they're kind of cobbled together with different funding streams. We've lost two of those primary funding streams this year. And although we're very committed to continuing to provide transitional housing, it's just getting more and more challenging to do so. We also onsite provide supportive workshops and case management for these folks. So most of our clients in transitional housing receive care management and the ability to address the barriers that got them into their homelessness situation to begin with. So I'm asking for your support to continue this program. Again, we believe that helping these folks regain the ability to rent and go back to work is probably the most important thing for the family. Most of our folks are single parents with little ones, and so we kind of wrap around services around the parent and the children at the same time to hopefully impact this reoccurring situation. So do you have questions for me?
Supervisor McCallum?
Thank you. So again, these units would be specifically homeless families. And it's, you don't just provide rental assistance, but it's also a wraparound services to address the underlying issues that have resulted in homelessness or that are barriers to employment.
That's right, John. So most of these folks have credit problems, so we help them repair their credit. Many of them have an addiction and we, you know, on the same property is our licensed outpatient treatment program, so they are given outpatient treatment services there as well.
Thank you. I have a clarifying question. So in the report, it's request allocated 43,000, but then it also says it's a three-year request. So is it 43,000 for three years, each of three years?
I was hoping, yes.
But that's what the request is?
Right.
So it's like, it's a, it's a program that you're wanting ongoing funding?
Support for.
Okay, got it. Hospitality House.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Paul Davis. I'm the Operations Manager at the Mendocino Coast Hospitality Center over in Fort Bragg. And as you may or may not know, the county as a whole lost some of its HUD project funding for next year and we have some concerns about that. One of the things that's going away is funding for supportive services, which is staff that can help homeless people who have the potential of going into some of the available housing programs to navigate that system, have a, have a fluid transition into that system and then provide them with some services once they're housed so that they can stay housed. A lot of the housing programs aren't as simple as you qualify, come on in. So I'll just give you a brief job, job description of what this person would do. They would operate as the initial contact person for our coordinated entry system. That means that they would provide them with assessments and rate them according to vulnerability, which is a new COC mandate that we're doing now. They'll assist the client in obtaining necessary documentation that's required for housing. They'll assist the clients in navigating any challenges that they have due to their barriers. That could be physical barriers, mental barriers, drug addiction, things of that nature. They'll case conference with other agencies. And of course, they would be the one who would be doing all of the required documentation and entry into the homeless database system. So that's what we're looking for. Do you have any questions?
Supervisor McCallum?
So the request is for funding for a case manager for one year.
Yes.
Would you be able to sustain that position going forward?
I would hope so. I would hope that we could fund some other funding by then.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, next would be planning and building services.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Recently, we discussed with your board the need to have a planning document in place that provides staff with guidance and direction to access available funding. The request here would be for us to set aside funding, to hire a consultant to prepare that plan so that we'd bring that to your board. And that would be our, kind of our roadmap for going after funding. It's not as sexy as all the other ones, I know.
Staff can't do that in-house?
Well, I'm, I'm really busy, but I could probably find some extra time on a weekend or nights or something to get that taken care of.
Supervisor McCallum?
Well, and it occurs to me, another option might be, we've allocated 100,000 in the next fiscal year budget for a grant writer. I think, you know, having someone actually pursue grants that are available or if they have expertise in CDBG, and by the way, Mr. Moore seems to be pretty knowledgeable in CDBG, but maybe working in concert with the grant writer might be the best bang for our buck rather than allocate 50,000 to create a separate plan, which would only create the plan.
Yeah. I think, I mean, but I think what I'm hearing though is, is to get some sort of roadmap for what types of grants we do want to be pursuing and what's out there. And before we start, before we hire the grant writer to start writing the grants. And so, but it could be that some small amount of that 100,000, I would say a small amount, could be allocated. I mean, there's facilitators out there. There, I don't know, I don't, 50,000 sounds like an awful lot of money for that function.
And if I may, Steve Dunnecliff. So I, I think that there are opportunities to, to, you know, pursue other paths here. The big thing that, that the department was worried about is we'd laid out for your board a timeline that was going to have us get sort of the best possible CDBG application lined up for the next opportunity, which I think is 2018? Is that?
It would be 17.
2017. And so we were just, a $50,000 commitment here would allow us to make sure that we met that. There's other ways that we could, you know, prioritize that. I do think though, that it'll take effort beyond simply planning and building to make sure that deadline's met.
So maybe coordination with the executive office, maybe there's some help there? Yeah. Okay. Okay, right. Now, the revolving loan fund, I'm not sure who, who that is. Is that you?
I guess so. That's just an option available to your board that, that we could amend our, our public, our program income use plan to allow for us to, to set aside program income as it comes in. It goes into a specific purpose fund and then that funding would be specifically allocated either to a housing assistance program or a business assistance program. And those, those funds would be used specifically and exclusively for that purpose. And once the money went into the fund, it would have to stay in the fund. It could never be moved out of the fund. But it is an option available to your board.
So could you just elaborate a little bit with this? This is a fund that doesn't exist now. It would be created by the county and would it be for rental assistance or would it be for loans that are paid back into the fund?
It could be any of the above. It's, it's a requirement through HCD that if, if you're going to use program income for, and you want to set it aside for a nonspecific purpose, that you establish what's called a revolving loan fund. We currently have a program income reuse plan that doesn't provide for that, but the HCD does allow you to set up one of two revolving loan funds. The first one is for housing assistance and that's kind of vague. You could actually, it'd be a loan program that you could offer down payment assistance programs. You could do housing rehabilitation programs through the, the housing assistance component of the RLF. Or you can provide business assistance, which would be business loans to, to, to new and up, up and coming businesses to assist them. Those are the only two eligible RLFs that HCD will allow you to establish.
And I probably, we should probably go back and ask this question of all that, but with this revolving loan fund, as you described it, would that be an eligible and a competitive pro, program in a future grant application?
It would, it would be as competitive as, as some of the, the projects discussed here, I, I think. From the standpoint, HCD has priorities different year, that every year that they establish that they, that they tend to want people to direct their funding. Business assistance, I think, is, is always really important to them, economic development related type activities. And from a local community standpoint, I think housing assistance is big. I mean, we've all heard about the issues with affordability and the availability and so on and so forth. And I think we could make a very good case that, that this could be funded with an annual grant as well as with program income. They're both, it's eligible for either, if that answers your question.
So eligible, but also competitive, I guess is the question though. Would it score high? Would it be competitive in a future grant application?
I think so.
Okay. All right. And then we got the road improvements, 120,000. I guess my immediate question on this, I really like the idea of using program income in the future for road projects, although when I see the 120,000 figure, for road projects, that would be an awfully small project. And my basic understanding, when cities have used... when cities have used CBD program come in the past for roads is I thought the road improvement has to have a longevity of like at least fifteen or twenty years, and so I think it's probably at least a double chip seal, if not an overlay, and at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, you're just not covering a lot of territory. So, I guess my question is, is this technically eligible, but in this amount, is it really, is it realistic? Yeah?
It's technically eligible. Your board has expressed an interest in using CDBG for those kinds of projects. I don't know that it's very efficient, because if we, the idea is not to really assemble this money over a number of years to come up with an amount that can do a viable project, because the longer we sit on program income, it impacts our ability to spend our grant funds, which impacts our ability to be competitive or to submit a grant application. So, the idea is to allocate this program income to projects that can spend the money so we can spend our grant funds. And so, a hundred and twenty thousand, in conversations with Howard, he says there's a lot of upfront cost on this, and you can't go very far. The roadways that would benefit from this generally are residential, low-income residential areas, and I can't remember the exact term he used, but he said it wasn't a very long stretch, and maybe what he could do is take this and combine this with other projects that might be in these areas that are eligible to supplement those, but he wasn't really sure at this point in time if that was a possibility.
Okay.
Other public?
Yeah. Do we have any additional public comment on any of these applications or proposals? Okay, not seeing any. Okay, Supervisors. Supervisor Brown?
I was trying to go back. The total amount is one twenty, correct? Yeah.
It's a hundred and twenty thousand per year. This is amortized payments, so, I mean, you could allocate, if you'd like, multiple years. It just wouldn't be available until it comes in. For example, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is there, that'll fund an operation now, then a hundred and twenty thousand will come in next year, and that could be used to fund the second year of that program or however you wish to do that.
Okay, Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Chair Jirdy. Well, as usual, we found this out before. You have a little bit of money and lots of requests, and every one of them are certainly worthy. I'm, with the issues we have before us today and the conversations, I'm really leaning towards the Unity Village Rent Assistance and Homeless Supportive Services being proposed by Mendocino Coast Hospitality Center, and then, of course, the first one was Ford Street Project. Every one of these are so worthy, but I know there's an immediate need for that, and it would help people that don't receive services in other ways or more people. And right now, that is a huge issue, a lot of concern countywide, so that's, but I look at RCHDC, and oh my gosh, West Company, how could I not support West Company? But RCHDC and acquisition of property for housing for homeless, seriously mentally ill people, it's so difficult, but I do want to rank them. It looks like possibly at least two of these could be funded.
Supervisor McCown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, it's the, our common dilemma of finite resources and infinite need, two of the project, and I'm thinking that we could split the hundred and twenty thousand among, you know, maybe three groups. It doesn't give everybody what they need, maybe it doesn't give anybody what they need, but it does help a number of groups. And two of the ones that I was looking at was the Unity Village for Ford Street and the Case Manager for the Hospitality Center. So, those were definitely two that I had ranked high on my list. The RCHDC land acquisition, I do support that. I think that's a very valuable project. It's also one that it will still be at least two or three years before it's built. The hundred and twenty thousand, or if we cut it in a third and it was forty, it's probably going to amount to a drop in the bucket for that project. And again, to me, some of the others, like Ford Street, Hospitality Center, and West Company, have much more of an immediate need. So, you know, I'm interested in hearing what others have to say, but I would probably support dividing the one twenty among Ford Street, Hospitality Center, and West Company.
Okay, Supervisor Woodhouse.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We all agree that they're all worthy, and this isn't fun, but at least there's some money. I'm agreeing with the supervisors who spoke as far as feeling Ford Street's wraparound approach is logical, and that's where we're going to have actual success, and it's changing people's lives, so that works. I want to be supportive of that. And West Company, you have, I would think you'd want to support things that created jobs, that would pull people out of marginal existence, and that money spreads throughout the economy, so I'm rating West Company at the very highest and Ford Street below that. And I wish we had money to give all the others, but that would be my preference to make meaningful amounts to those two.
Well, where I'm coming from, West Company has a long, successful track record, and so I guess I would put them definitely at the top, and I'm concerned that if they're too far below their request, that they're not going to be able to fully match their funds. And, you know, I would really, I'm really looking forward to the day when the county's able to apply for a new grant and not use program income for this, because I do think it would be a successful grant application if we included West Company in it. So, I'm thinking, just hearing from my colleagues, I would like to see maybe a motion that has something on the order of maybe eighty thousand dollars for West Company and forty thousand dollars for Ford Street. Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Chair Jirdy. I'm willing to go and do that, relooking at this or make a motion, whatever. I do understand West Company is a countywide and has shown success record, you know, through the twenty years or twenty-three years of existence, has a good track record. But Ford Street Project is really a needed project for the populations we're dealing with, and that, just as with West Company, can make wonderful changes in county residents' lives. So, I can go there. I don't know what the split would be, but I would like to see the forty-three thousand six hundred and eighty, and whatever is left, I'd be willing to support a motion for West Company.
You'd like to see first what?
Unity Village, the rent assistance, and it's forty-three thousand six hundred and eighty, and if you take that away from the one twenty, it leaves approximately eighty, but I'd like to, that Unity Village get the full amount.
I'd be very supportive of that. I think that's logical, that Ford Street would get one year to prove their program. West Company would be strengthened, and we're going to need to find other monies to fully fund them for the rest of the year, but this would be a big start. So, I will second that motion.
Okay, I guess I made the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, I support that. You know, again, finite resources, infinite need, but we are funding or partially funding the two that all four of us named as a priority, so it makes sense.
And Supervisor Hamburg might have been a fifth on that if he was here. We know he's a longtime supporter of West Company. Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, and I'd also like to say that we get this grant writer coming on board. If we have some success, hopefully we can get more funds coming in to fund other projects and be successful.
That's why it's a priority. Okay, we have a motion on the table. Do you have that currently?
Yes, I currently have the motion as funding is allocated as forty-three thousand six hundred and eighty dollars for the Ford Street Unity Village Project and the balance allocated to the West Company.
Okay. Thank you. I think we all know what the motion is, and we'll vote by the button.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thanks. And we have another item sponsored by the Planning Department, and that is Notice Public Hearing Discussion and Possible Adoption of Resolution Confirming the Acceptance of the Fiscal Year sixteen seventeen Mendocino County Lodging Business Improvement District Annual Report, thereby levying an annual assessment for the bid for fiscal year sixteen seventeen. And I guess I want to turn to Clerk Carla, we established proper notice. Oh, I guess we closed it at?
With a vote.
At two thirty-one?
Yes, proper notice has been established and all correspondence has been distributed.
Okay, thank you. So, then we'll open this public hearing at two thirty-five. And do you want to lead off this, Steve?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Steve Dunnecliff, Director of Planning and Building Services. Today is the second step in the annual process to renew the Mendocino County Lodging Business Improvement District, which, as you know, enables the collection of a one percent room rent, one percent assessment on gross room rents in the county. On May seventeenth, your board adopted a resolution approving an annual report that was created by your bid advisory board, and today you're being asked to confirm your acceptance of that approval. This is a Notice Public Hearing. The initial resolution was circulated and published to give lodging members an opportunity to protest the continuation of the bid. I'm not aware of any protest that's been submitted in writing, and so with your action today, you could continue the bid into fiscal year sixteen seventeen. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. So, do we, we have opened the public hearing. Do we have any public comment? We have two members of the bid advisory board present.
Here to answer questions.
Okay.
I'll move approval of the recommended action.
Second?
Okay, we have a second. Any questions or comments? No public comment? We'll vote by the button, I guess.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
Thank you. I was scratching it. It's scratched. Hope you can read it.
Okay, we're really sailing through the agenda right now. So, the next thing on the agenda, we only have two things left. We've got the Chief Executive Officer's monthly report, which we all have a copy of. Alan, do you want to hit the highlights?
Sure, Chair Jirdy. So, your board has been aware of some issues at the Mendocino County Museum in Willetts related to potential mold contamination. The museum was closed for a short period of time. The main areas of the museum, the lobby, the store, the main gallery, and the engine house are open again, they're accessible to the public during normal business hours. The classroom area and some other areas remain closed. We have received a very tentative remediation schedule, and remediation work is supposed to start on the classroom area tomorrow. And once we get a final remediation plan, you know, of course, we'll do what's necessary to keep your board informed and the public. There will be a point in time when the main gallery and other areas of the museum will have to be closed again to do some remediation work, so, but we're doing everything we can to keep that to a minimum. We feel like we have a good team together working on that, so it looks like Supervisor Woodhouse has a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to ask, any idea how long a closing might take, what depth of work has to be done?
We don't have a final schedule from the contractors yet, so I would hate to give any false information out. The area in the main part of the museum that needs worked on is not particularly extensive. The main plenum of the HVAC system is the area that's contaminated, so outside of fixing that issue and just doing basically simple wipe down of surfaces in the museum, you know, that's basically all that is required in that main gallery area, so. We do have an update on the Mendocino County Job Fair. I believe HR Director Dunham has updated your board on that a number of times, just reminding the public in particular that that is coming on July fifteenth, and there's more information available on both Facebook and the website that's listed here. Along the lines of that, I did want to point out that there's not a specific section in the CEO report on this, but Mendocino College and Marymount California University from Lake County will be participating in the job fair. Marymount California has a number of bachelor's completion and master's degree programs that they're offering. They are looking for Mendocino County residents in their programs, so they're hoping to kind of expand their reach into Mendocino County. They have a new president that just reduced the tuition fees for Lake County, Mendocino County, and some other neighboring counties, and they are having open houses at their campus in Lucerne every Wednesday through the summer months, so just wanted to get that out as much as possible. If that fits into someone's career goals, they should take a look at that. Also, on July fifteenth, there will be a California Public Utilities Commission meeting held here in the board chambers, so additional information will be coming out on that. I believe your board has been made aware of that coming up. Senate Bill two seventy-two implementation, this is a requirement that additional public information be provided on the county, county's use of a number of enterprise systems throughout our departments. There's a team that's being led by the Information Services Division on completing a listing of these requirements to meet the new regulations, and that will be posted on the county website by July first, which is the required disclosure date, and I believe that has to be updated annually from there. There's a brief legislative update here. I won't go into any additional details on that unless your board has questions. Animal Care Services update, you can see that here. We heard from the interim shelter manager this morning. The main point of this update, of course, is the attachment, which is a status update on the short, medium, and longer-term goals that were part of an earlier presentation to your board. So, you can see very significant progress, a lot of projects underway, a lot of projects have been already completed, and, you know, still a significant amount of work to do. So, if your board has specific questions on that, our shelter manager is here. But also wanted to point out the information in the CEO report related to the Water Agency and the public workshop on the fourteenth. So, my expectation is if there's any additional details, perhaps Supervisor Brown might want to provide additional information on that.
Do you want to add?
I just wanted to ask a question of Mary Jane.
Okay.
And that has to do with the installation of waterproof panels. I thought we, that was done. When I visited that day, I think it had been done.
Mary Jane Montana, interim shelter director, and yes, it's one, two, three, the fourth one down, and it was completed in May.
Okay.
Yes.
We just tried to show the whole list of tasks and the completion date on there, so even the ones that have already been completed should all be listed.
Well, it was just being questioned this morning, and I just remembered. Well, it was just being questioned this morning, and I just remembered seeing that and getting an explanation when I was on my tour. And then on Sigma, that is moving forward, and we will be interviewed by the assessment team, the Sacramento State Collaboration for, what is it? Public Policy. I can't remember what their name is, but our facilitator will be interviewing everyone, and we will have a meeting mid-July. And hopefully then we go forward. I want to make it a much faster process, and the facilitator is being paid by Department of Water Resources. They said we're fine, but we've got to do these separate interviews of each one of the agencies involved, and then come back with a plan. And they're going to be asking how each agency thinks it should be structured. And I think that's really important because we just don't have much time, and we've got to get it done.
And for, can you remind me, Sigma is what, Sustainable Groundwater?
Sustainable Groundwater Management Act.
Okay.
And they're very serious timelines, and the only water basin that it applies to in Mendocino County is Ukiah Valley.
Yeah, yeah, at this point.
Yeah, true. And they will be coming out with a new list. I think it'll be shortly after the first of the year. Others may be pulled into it. And they have set up in some of their criteria, different points that they'll be looking at. And one is the interconnection of surface water with groundwater, salt intrusion. So who knows where we're going from there? But bottom line is, right now, it's only Ukiah, Ukiah Valley.
So are there any public comments on the CEO's report? Any public comments on the CEO's report?
Just to briefly finish up, there's a couple other items on the last page. Of course, your board is aware of the Granicus update. Hopefully, most of you have been utilizing that technology a little bit, at least throughout the day, to familiarize yourself with this. And then, of course, there are a couple of board and commission vacancies listed, one on the Community Development Commission and one on the Westport Cemetery District, so I wanted to point those out as well. And that concludes the CEO report unless you have any additional questions.
So the Westport, I'll check in, but I thought we had applications to renew on that, so maybe just the, because the term was up, maybe that's why it's on the list, but I'll check in with that.
Let me ask a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mary Jane, I was looking at what was handed in during public expression. I don't know if you got a copy of this or not by the lady that spoke, and that's why when I saw that there, I thought, I think that's been done.
Yes, I did get a copy of it, and I don't know, I mean, maybe some of it's not obvious to folks that are in there, but a couple of things that were highlighted, the new cooling units are on today and working. We may have to get one more. It's pretty hot in there, but it's an improvement over the mistures, but.
Thank goodness, because we're going into hundred-degree weather.
So, and like I said, some of these things are scheduled with contractors, the painting and that sort of thing, but that's why we wanted to publish the matrix, so everybody has an idea of where things are at.
Sure.
Do appreciate the matrix. I mean, it's actually a slightly more condensed version of the one we got on mental health. Appreciate the condensing.
And we'll keep it updated. You know, I don't know, maybe we'll put it on our.
We'll just include it with each CEO report each month, so your board's aware of the status of all the projects.
And it's a handy tool at staff meetings for me to point at, too.
Sure, and I hope to make it back down in the next couple of weeks.
That'd be great, and everybody that shows up has to take two kittens out with them.
I'll talk to my husband. We may have a home for maybe one or two.
I did want to just quickly thank our facility staff. You know, your board made it clear that you wanted to put a lot of effort into the shelter, and so they've really made that a priority. So Deputy CEO Shaver and Mr. Mazanti, they've put a lot of work in at the shelter, and we really appreciate that.
The day I, the last time I was down there, there were crews working along the railroad and the roads, getting the dry grass up and everything. And I thought, okay, this is really looking.
Still a lot to do, but.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, last thing on our agenda is supervisors' reports.
Chair Jurdie, I gave my mind up in order for leadership Mendocino. But I will just make one recommendation to staff, looking at our new agenda summary. The section at the type, when it says item number, this, oh, you're going to fix that? Okay, I think it should have a section number. Okay, great, thank you.
I mentioned one of the meetings I attended recently, which was the city council meeting. I already went over ad nauseam about my concern with the way that was presented by Rural Community Housing about the limitations for those dollars and how it sounds as if there's much more latitude in how those dollars can be spent for housing and who can be housed in that facility. So I'm just, I've already gone over it, but I just do think it's unfortunate because I think it's hopefully not totally poisoned that project with Fort Bragg and possibly Ukiah, the way it was presented. And hopefully we can resolve some of those issues at a future meeting. So I just wanted to repeat that under supervisor reports, because that's where I was originally planning on bringing it up. And I do want to thank Chris for the meetings that he was holding around the county about the clean energy. I was able to attend the meeting last night in Fort Bragg with Chris and with the person from the statewide organization, and actually Sonoma Clean Power, who was there, but with a different representative. Wasn't a huge turnout, but at least, you know, it was a start. And then earlier in the day, the Broadband Alliance had a meeting in Fort Bragg that I also attended, so they were getting the word out. And actually, that was the first time I actually heard something that sounded promising beyond a grant that somebody hoped to get. And that was, it turns out that in Fort Bragg proper, MCN, Mendocino Coast Network, which is the kind of the local provider of internet service on the coast, and they've worked with AT&amp;T to get relatively high-speed internet service in Fort Bragg and in the town of Mendocino, that they've now signed up enough customers in Fort Bragg city limits that they, that their partner, which is SonicNet, has agreed that now that they've met that threshold, when they get to it, they will, they will expand the fiber lines in Fort Bragg to a greater, I don't know, greater, more blocks would be covered. And so with that greater coverage within Fort Bragg, they, then another provider that's here in the county, and it's like CICUS or, you may, some of you guys will know the name, but anyway, they're based here in Ukiah. They serve River Valley, but they tend to offer, it sounds like wireless service, internet service, but they piggyback on other service providers. Their hope is that if SonicNet and MCN are able to expand within Fort Bragg's footprint, then this other company can then piggyback and offer wireless service to outside of city limits and still offer relatively fast, relatively affordable, higher-speed internet service. So it sounds like it's maybe just a matter of time before that happens between the two companies. So that was really pretty hopeful, I thought, because so much of what we've heard in the past, at least what I've heard, because I'm not a member of the Broadband Alliance, not, I don't have time to go to their meetings, but in the past, it sounds like they've been always hoping that there'll be this grant coming in and this grand project would come about, and this is a more incremental project that maybe is more doable. Anyway, Supervisor Brown?
Yes, and what I heard from the Broadband Alliance was that the worst served is Fort Bragg and Potter Valley. Sounds like maybe you've got your problem fixed.
Well.
When Potter Valley was trying to do their infrastructure, and actually, it was a USDA rural development grant that they applied for. It got to DC, and it got tabled because the big map that they hold showed that we already had reliable service, which we all know is not true. So, but it sounds good for Fort Bragg.
Yeah, I just do want to clarify, just because, you know, I live in Fort Bragg city limits, and I live about one mile east of Main Street, Highway One. So I live near the schools, basically.
Oh, you get their service?
In the sunbelt of Fort Bragg. And, but I live in city limits, and if you were to go north across Pudding Creek into the county, because on the other side of Pudding Creek, you're in the county for the most part, but just across the creek as the crow flies, you're in the county, and you're on dial-up, and you're only a mile off of Highway One, and you're really close to town, and you don't have to go very far south of town to have the same experience. So basically, the cable company did not provide service beyond a certain point, and AT&amp;T just hasn't ramped up their service to these areas that are just outside of town. So again, the hope is that if they're able to expand, improve this fiber service within Fort Bragg city limits, and maybe just a little bit beyond, then these other services will then improve for people who live in the Fort Bragg zip code but don't live at city limits and are in suburban neighborhoods. I mean, it's not too dissimilar from Brook Trails, you know, it's that, not quite that density maybe, but one acre parcels. Okay, Supervisor McCallan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Assembly Member Wood has a bill making its way through the legislature that would require comprehensive mapping of where fiber optic is available. And whenever Caltrans is opening a trench for any reason, they would be required to notify providers so that they could install conduit for potential future installation of fiber. If no providers respond, Caltrans would be required to install the conduit so that it would be available. So if in the future a project is feasible, a lot of the work or a lot of the expense is already accomplished. So, you know, unfortunately, I think this whole thing is going to be incremental for us to ever get where we want to be.
Like it was back in the good old days.
The Behavioral Health Advisory Board did meet, and there were a number of issues regarding the bylaws, as you recall, when they came to the board. I believe with the assistance of county council and clerk of the board office and executive office, those issues have been worked out so that perhaps at our next meeting, we will see an updated version of the Behavioral Health Advisory Board bylaws. Also, and this will apply, I believe, to more boards and commissions than just the BHAB, we will have a streamlined process for reappointment of incumbents, whether they're serving a partial term and wish to apply for a full term, or whether they're completing a full term and wish to reapply. It'll be a much more user-friendly application process. So they would, clerk of the board will do an outreach to find out, is there an interest in reappointment? If there is, they will check with the district supervisor, and there will no longer be the need for the reapply in person to submit another hard copy application. So just makes it a little easier for them. Also, the board reviewed the Mental Health Services Act annual update. That, I think, will be coming to the board shortly. We will also be seeing the annual report from the Mental Health Advisory Board. And having been on the board as either the board representative or alternate since two thousand and nine, I think the report that is being submitted this year is really very polished and professional-looking, and I'm hoping that maybe that can be distributed to the board in advance of normal agenda publication, and it may already.
I think we received it as an email.
Yeah, I think we did get it by email. So I would encourage everyone to take the opportunity to review that. Couple more items, the twenty sixteen seventeen grand jury empanelment ceremony will be Wednesday, June twenty-ninth, twenty sixteen, at eleven AM, Courtroom E. We also all received a letter regarding the United Pomona Nations Council. Sixteen tribes from Lake, Mendocino, and Sonoma Counties have formed an organization to, I think, better advocate for tribal interests and, to some degree, service a point of contact if there are issues that the county has that may involve tribal interests. In some instances, this will probably provide an expedited way of initiating government-to-government consultations. Also, something unusual, and I'm sure if Supervisor Hamburg was here, he would be highlighting it, but we did receive a letter of thanks from the Anderson Valley Ambulance Service for the grant of sixty-six thousand that we've made to them for the coming fiscal year. And I appreciate the fact that they took the time to write a letter to acknowledge the funding that the county did provide. And one last thing, an intrepid St. Helena couple has renovated the Mendocino campground that is at the intersection of Highway One and Comanche-Ukiah Road. They will be initially providing twenty camping platforms with safari tents. It's not camping like you're used to. They will rent for a hundred and twenty-five dollars a night with a two-night minimum. But it highlights to me also the, I think, long overdue task of the board and the county revisiting the issue of extending the transient occupancy tax to campgrounds, because clearly, at this level, they're in direct competition with traditional bed and breakfast, and yet it's something of an unfair business practice that they don't bear the same cost that other overnight lodging does.
Okay, Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, and thank you Supervisor McCallan about bringing up the Pomona Nations and their organizing to be together. They do hold meetings, and I have met with the group. And I also, being that for tribal government, it's government-to-government, I will be meeting with Coyote Valley Tribal Chair to find out about, he would just like to address other economic development. I don't know if it would be suggestions or, you know, ventures that they're looking into for the tribe. And as we know, their tent for the casino is very old, so they're maybe looking at other projects. But I will be meeting with him. I think it's important that we keep all our tribal relations up and as we go forward. So when there is something, they inform us, we inform them, and again, it's government-to-government, so.
I did want to report on a couple more meetings. The last Wednesday at the retirement board meeting, we adopted the annual budget and did a few other things. But at the end of the meeting, our board members' reports, our appointee Jerry, what's his last name?
Harris.
Harris, requested and the board agreed to have James, our administrator, come back at either the next, one of the next two meetings with any, you know, what are the legal options that the retirement board and/or the board supervisors has to, you know, basically make the plan more sustainable. So they're, you know, it's.
The two-year request will be fulfilled?
Yeah, that's. Well, so, I mean, she put it a slightly different way, but basically, the request is, you know, just to be more certain that the money in equals the expense out. So anyway, it's coming in the next meeting or two, and I did appreciate the fact that she requested that and that the board agreed.
And I'd like to add, I heard a very interesting conversation, it's while I was driving in the car. It was on KGO, talk radio, about our social security.
Yours and mine?
Oh, yes, and Medicare, and it's, you know, it's debt, unfunded debt. But it was very interesting to hear what they had to say, because they were using the big Ts, like in Trillion. Got to get their hands wrapped. And we've got to get their hands wrapped around it, but I think every public entity, as well as private pensions, everyone is struggling, so, but that's good to hear.
And then also, the General Government Committee, which met yesterday morning, we've, you know, we gave some feedback to county staff. We're asking for some different options to come back. We're going to, we will have a special committee meeting on Friday, July eighth, which will allow time for some additional feedback prior to this coming back to the full board for feedback. And our intent is to work with staff to have some options on some issues that have not necessarily been addressed by the board, or refinements to what the board, what the ad hoc committee came up with. And so so we're hoping that, you know, we're not trying to provide, you know, the, no options to the full board, we're trying to create options for the board, because we know that there could be differing opinions on on certain aspects. Supervisor Brown?
Also, the tax measure will be coming back on July twelfth.
For the full board?
For the full board.
Yeah.
And that's where there are some options that we all need to understand and weigh in on, but that will be the newest thing, and then we're hoping on the eighteenth, what were the dates?
July eighteenth, yeah.
Yeah, eighteenth, nineteenth, we will be having an ordinance come.
As a follow-up to our committee meeting?
Yes.
Again, there will be obviously a few decision points for the whole board. Supervisor, what else?
Thank you. Couple of things, I wanted to report with Supervisor Hamburg, and we'll wait until our next meeting so he can be here, about where we're at with our ad hoc, working with SWO, and maybe there'll be more developments to report. And we're also having an important MSWA meeting, and so we'll report on both of those at the next meeting when he's able to participate.
But we also re- received a letter.
I can get into that if you have questions or report next time. I did want to tell you about how nice it is between the meetings to go see Willets and Leightonville and Coblo and the fire people and Brook Trails and the tribes, and thank you for talking about the tribes. I've been to two of the tribes and have good relations and building, and I'm promising by the next meeting to have connected with the third tribe, because they are always ignored. People go see them when they're campaigning, and they say that's the last they see them until the next campaign, so I'm determined to break that pattern and spend more time. They're very intelligent people who have, are doing the many governments of what we're doing, have very similar problems. So I see there's a lot that we could benefit from each other with just a little bit of energy, because their needs are great. This is from Healthy Start, I just wanted to show you these examples of something they do, and maybe they've given them to your family resource centers. They're just one simple way to deal with drug problems, whether it's seniors or somebody with Alzheimer's or mixed-up medications. You can keep your narcotics and prescriptions in there and lock it up, and there's also the pill daily breakdown there for the Alzheimer's people, and it just tells you, if somebody in the family cuts it open, then you can have a conversation with Johnny and Linda about the drugs, because it's a huge epidemic, and not much is being done about it. We worry about big drugs that we can't have an impact, and here, they can have impacts on simple things. So I'm going to take those to MSWA as well, they're very active in disposing and working with the state to try to get proper disposal of prescription drugs, and so simple things to keep it out of the watershed. I mean, there's little things that are huge if we can accomplish these small things, and there's a lot of opportunities.
And the Sheriff's Department does take the pills, and as you know, I lost my cousin, and there was a lot of disposal of pills that I found throughout his house, just outdated or, you know, whatever. They weren't necessarily prescription drugs, you know, somewhere over the counter, but you still don't want to put them down the toilet or out on the ground. But the liquid, I did take down to the place on Plant Road.
Great. It's quite a service they provide of all that stuff.
Oh, absolutely.
I can't believe what you can dump off there, the whole garbage thing. So I just wanted to know, there's so many people out there doing tremendous things, and they really, we've talked about it, they understand their community, the community trusts them, and some people walk in the door for one thing and end up getting a bundle of services that almost know there is a cost to everything, but it's deep relationships with these in Coblo and Leightonville and Willets, so it's really great to be involved. It reminds you why you got involved in government. Thanks.
Okay. And I'm going to grab the gavel, because I have to travel to Sacramento tonight.
Okay, all right, well, that will adjourn at ten minutes after three.
Hey, you did a good job.